We're in record.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. How we doing?
Hey, good afternoon. Alright, got myself set.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hey, good afternoon Superintendent.
Hi Doc, how are you?
Doing fine, Mr. Brown. Had to get off mute.
Hey, how's everybody doing today?
Hey, Harold.
I see I'm by the window. I'm gonna switch my orientation so I don't have that backlight behind me.
Alright.
Mr. Ashley, do you want me to begin at least reading the meeting norms now?
Ah, yes, let's go ahead and get started.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. It's February 23rd, 2021 Orleans Parish School Board Committee of the Whole. The meeting norms for today are as follows. Today, we are all abiding by the CDC and the Governor's Guidelines for Gatherings, giving, given the public health emergency, under the circumstances and in accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute, forty-two, colon, seventeen point one, allowing for public agencies to conduct meetings by telephone conference or video conference. But the following meeting norms before we formally get started, this is being recorded for public meeting purposes. If you were to make official public comment online regarding an item on the Orleans Parish School Board Meeting Agenda, please submit an e-public comment card. For smartphone users, you can scan the QR code displayed on the screen now, prior to the start of the meeting or within thirty minutes after the meeting begins. The meeting moderator will announce the speaker at the appropriate time. The speaker is to self-identify with the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the webpage, and the meeting moderator will unmute the speaker's audio. To comment by phone, please submit an e-public comment card at go dot boarddocs dot com slash LA slash NOPS slash board dot NSF slash public, prior to the start of the meeting or again within thirty minutes after the meeting begins. The meeting moderator will announce the speaker at the appropriate time. The speaker is to self-identify with the raise your hand feature by dialing star six, and the meeting moderator will unmute the speaker's audio. Pursuant to Orleans Parish School Board Policy, each speaker should state his or her name and address for the record, and all public comments will be limited to two minutes. Any messages sent in the chat or the Q and A functions will be noted in the record but will not be read as live public comment during the meeting today. If you need further instructions on how to make a pub, make a public comment at today's meeting, those may be found at go dot boarddocs dot com slash LA slash NOPS slash board dot NSF slash public, located on the same page where the agenda is typically posted. Board members, your lines are muted upon joining the broadcast. At roll call to make a comment, make a motion, second a motion, or to cast a roll call vote, please unmute yourselves. The audio button is located in the bottom left corner of your screens. The action item will be a roll call vote to ensure we are recording the vote appropriately. Please remember to mute your lines however when you are not speaking for a clearer broadcast. The general format of the meeting will be as follows. Each action item will be read with a recommended action. I will ask for a motion and a second, followed by public comment, discussion by the board thereafter, and then a roll call vote. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ashley.
Thank you Board Council Williams. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Orleans Parish School Board Committee of the Whole Meeting for February 23rd, 2021. The time now is 1:03 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ashley.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present.
Mr. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Present.
Dr. Wagner Romero.
Present.
Ms. Bowdoin. Mr. Zerbegon.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Interpretation services are available during today's meeting, and at this time, I'll yield to our interpreters.
Good morning. My name is Viet Quan Pham. I'm an English interpreter. And, xin chào toàn thầy quý vị. Tôi là Việt. Hôm nay tôi sẽ thông dịch cho quý vị. Nếu quý vị cần, xin quý vị cho tôi biết. Quý vị có thể liên lạc với tôi ở số điện thoại 504 975 197. Xin chào thằng ca mâun quý vị. Thank you. At this time, I will give you back to Mr. McFarlane for the Spanish interpreter.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Christopher McFarlane. I'll be offering services in Spanish. Buenos dias a todos. Si hay servicios necesarios en español, soy aquí y disponible. Gracias. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Let's move to 1.2 on the Agenda Pledge of Allegiance. Right now, the pledge will be led by previously recorded NOLA PS students. Everyone should stay on mute in terms of my board members and just follow along so we can hear the audio clear.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's move to 1.3, adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications of our agenda at this time? Hearing none. May I have a motion? So moved. I have a motion, and I have a motion by Ms. Zerbegon. I have a second by Ms. Bowdoin. Do we have any public comments on this matter?
None.
Hearing none, I'll yield to Board Council for roll call vote.
Mr. Ashley.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Marshall.
Yes.
Ms. Bowdoin. Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Dr. Wagner Romero.
Yes.
Mr. Zerbegon.
Yes.
That item passes.
Thank you. Moving to 2.1, adoption of the minutes. At this time, I'll yield to our Board Council to take us through the approval of our minutes.
It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board adopt the minutes of the January 12th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting. May I have a motion?
So move, waving the reading of our minutes.
Yeah, the second.
With a motion by Mr. Ashley, a second by Mr. Brown. Any public comments?
None.
Any questions or comments from the board? Not where, oh, come, Mr. Ashley.
Yes.
Mr. Marshall.
Yes.
Ms. Bowdoin. Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Dr. Wagner Romero.
Yes.
Mr. Zerbegon.
Yes.
That item passes. The minutes are adopted. We're now at item three.
Thank you. At this time, I think we're gonna yield to the administration.
Yes. Thank you Board President Ashley. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our committee meeting. Today, we're gonna start with our presentation. Of course, our first update will be our schools update. Dina Hasiolis will be coming up to deliver that update, but while Dina is coming, I just wanna share, I had the awesome opportunity today to actually go to Children's Hospital to see firsthand of our school-based employees receiving their vaccinations. We know that it's been a long time coming, and even as I was able to share with teachers today, it's a special gratitude. Really thanking them for being on the front line each and every day. We put all the safety precautions that we have been mandated and plus those that were suggested, but we put in place to make sure that we would keep our students and employees and families safe all school year long. And so again, this is one more thing that's added to our obligation, if you would, through COVID-19, but I just wanna be very, very clear with everyone that even though our teachers are being vaccinated, we're not out of COVID-19. And so our safety precautions that we laid out on our roadmap from day one, those things will remain in place as we continue to move and throughout the remainder of the school year. So again, a very exciting time, and I would like to give a special appreciation to Tiffany Delkor and my team that did a lot of coordination over the weekend after the governor made this announcement to make sure that we were able to inoculate individuals as early as yesterday. So Dina, would you come up and give your school update at this time, but I definitely want to share my experience from earlier today.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. I'll pull up our presentation.
There you go.
There we go. Thank you. Good afternoon, every board members. Hope you're well. As Dr. Lewis said, we have exciting news around vaccines, so I'm gonna share today. Our schools update has a few pieces, and several of my colleagues will be jumping in as we work across the board to support our schools and families related to COVID and also some support programming. But real quick, I just wanted to share, as always, every month, while Mardi Gras looked different for, for all of this, this school year, we did host a mask-up Mardi Gras contest here at NOLA PS, so we had students from across the city submit their entries, and this is just an example of, I would say, there's so many messages to take away from these pictures, but resiliency and joy from our students during what has been a challenging year. And I'll say, the winner is right in the middle, Chloe from Plessy, as she made, what I will say, is a pretty fantastic mask that I wish I could get. So just wanted to share those images with all of you. So in terms of our COVID work and our ongoing responses, a few, this is just, again, our priorities this month from last month haven't shifted that much. We just have more exciting progress related to vaccines, which Ms. Delkor will be sharing momentarily. But our work continues to be coordination, communication, and support across various areas, most specifically, most recently, in helping schools through the end of January and into February, transition back to in-person learning, which has been an exciting development this past month, both K-8 and 912. Our COVID tracker continues to be going. We have updated that tracker, as we've shared publicly starting this month, to include cumulative data at the district and school level, which is a new element on that tracker. And we're continuing to go in all the different ways we can to support testing, work with our partners, and also speak around vaccinations. Just to highlight, this week marked the full return to in-person learning for all of our students. K-8 started on February 1st with their return back to school, and this past Monday, 912 all began to return as well. So across the city, our students are back in, following initially a sort of the baseline of our roadmap guidelines in terms of grades being served onsite, and then those that may require hybrid, most specifically, our middle and high school students based upon programming and space, et cetera. So it's exciting progress. To note to Dr. Lewis's point, all of our safety measures are still in place. Our schools are following the Phase 3 roadmap guidance. And as a reminder, all families continue to have the option during this third quarter to remain home and work through virtual learning, if that's something that suits them and their students. And I'll pivot to Ms. Delkor to talk about PPE distribution and vaccines.
Thanks, Dina. As you all know, we've also been working to make sure that additional PPE was going to be available to our schools this first week back from Mardi Gras break. We've been collecting items through donations and other purchases that we've made, but we've also really wanted to make sure that as we're pivoting to the spring, we're also making sure that not only are masks provided to our school staff, but quality masks. As we've learned, continued to learn more and more about the effectiveness of masks, we wanted to make sure that we're providing quality items, quality PPE to our schools. As a result, the district made a purchase, a purchase of 10,000 cloth face masks with PM 2.5 or particulate matter 2.5 filter inserts. And we'll be distributing those to our schools starting tomorrow on Wednesday. There was a note here that we were a little worried we might not get that distribution done on Wednesday because we were waiting for our last shipment of these specialty masks. And due to all of the weather effects and freezing weather we've had throughout the country, that did delay our delivery, but we did receive it. So this is a list of all the additional items we'll be providing to schools this week. I've restocking their PPE and making sure that that's quality PPE for them as a resource. And there's also a list of kind of what the typical range of items that will be distributed to each school. Depending on the number, the size of the staff at each school, we have purchased enough masks to make sure that we are providing one reusable cloth mask and three particulate matter filter replacements for each staff member in our school system. And wanted to provide everybody multiple updates on where we are with vaccinations. As you know, for the past few weeks, we've been working with Children's Hospital to make sure that our ambulatory health service providers in our schools, as well as those 65 years of age and older, were able to get priority access to vaccinations through Children's, and we've been working on that for the past few weeks. As of before Mardi Gras, we had about 115 people that were in this category of eligibility that still had not received their vaccination through Children's. And they were on the waitlist. Children's has committed that those individuals will be vaccinated by Monday of next week, so we will have all of the individuals of our previous eligibility vaccinated by the beginning of next week. Also, some clarity on those who are currently eligible, given the governor's recent announcement last Thursday. One point of clarity is that the governor did not extend vaccinations to Tier 2. So we are still only in Tier 1 of our vaccine eligibility, but rather, the governor and the Louisiana Department of Health expanded the current eligibility to include pre-K through 12 onsite school staff and a few other criteria related to age and chronic illnesses and pregnant women. We are currently at NOLA Pub Schools coordinating vaccinations for over 46 different school organizations and over 100 school sites. This includes not only NOLA Public Schools authorized schools, but also our Type 2 charters in Orleans Parish, NOCA, and other public school partners, for example, the Center for Resilience and the Bridge. So we're working with all of these various organizations to make sure that they have quick and easy access to the vaccine, and we'll talk a little bit more about that process. What we did in anticipation of the governor's announcement last week is of all these organizations that we are coordinating for, we randomized the order of those schools to receive the vaccine. So we randomly, through, through, through Excel, created a random number and identified a random order of vaccinations. We'll show you a table of what that looks like. But to help us understand as we identify partners in vaccine supply, how we would move through equitably these 46 schools, 46 school organizations. Also, at the last, at the end of last week, we also confirmed vaccine capacity with our partners, specifically Children's Hospital, to understand how many schools we should schedule for vaccines in this first week, and we'll talk a little bit more about those schools that were selected and how. We've also, through the past few days, identified additional partners who are helping to ensure our schools have easy and quick access to vaccinations. One of those recent partnerships that we're very excited about is with New Orleans East Hospital, who's actually providing mobile vaccination units who are going to the school site and vaccinating willing staff. We're also working to identify multiple, multiple more partners and are working currently with LSU Health Sciences and Daughters of Charity to identify additional methods and means of vaccination. Next slide. So this is the randomized order that we created with the different school organizations that we are working with. So again, they were randomized, and then we've put them in various groups. Our goal is to move through Group 1 before we move to Group 2, though we might not always use the exact order within these groups. For a sense of timing, of how quickly will we be able to move through each group, it's unfortunately completely dependent on vaccine supply of our partner organizations. We're only able to vaccinate as many people as they have doses for. But for example, we will complete all of Group 1 within our second week of vaccination, so next week, and will likely move into Group 2 next week as well. So at our current rate, it's taking us a couple of weeks to finish each group, but I anticipate that we will be moving through these groups much more quickly as we're identifying these additional partners and as vaccine supply continues to grow. So though we were only able to get through about half of Group 1 this week, we are actually hoping to move much more quickly through the others. Also, one other point is that some of our partnerships are also based on regional access and capacity. For example, New Orleans, our partnership with New Orleans East Hospital is identifying school groups within a certain area around the hospital. So there are schools within Group 2, and Group 3, and even Group 4 that we are currently vaccinating or planning to vaccinate next week because of this regional access and capacity coordination that we're doing with New Orleans East Hospital. And in the next slide, I'll talk about how many school sites are getting vaccines this week and how many doses we initiate, we anticipate our schools will receive. So just a quick overview of our current partners and our current methods of vaccination. The first is with Children's Hospital. Our Children's Hospital partnership, it provides vaccines at Children's Hospital Uptown Campus. And the schools who are utilizing Children's Hospital vaccination process are using an online scheduling tool to make appointments for their team members to go to Children's Hospital to receive their vaccine. Those vaccines are available to those staff members Monday through Saturday, and we have six school organizations this week who are actively making and receiving those appointments for this week, and we will select a next group for the following week. For New Orleans East Hospital, these are those mobile vaccination units. Vaccination occurs at the school site. Mobile vaccination units will spend about a half day at each campus, ensuring those willing staff members are vaccinated. We have about, because this number continues to change throughout the week, we have about eight school sites this week that are receiving vaccinations through New Orleans East Mobile Vaccination Units. And as I said, we're working on identifying additional partnerships with LSU Health Sciences, who has helped vaccinate a good, a good portion of our school nurses and a few other folks. And so we're looking forward to a future partnership with them for all of our school staff. And again, we're also working with Daughters of Charity. So this is just a sneak peek of what we've been able to do in Week 1 and what we anticipate to do in Week 2 of our vaccination process. So this week, the schools Audubon, Coghill, Moton, Fannie C. Williams, Einstein, and Lycée Francais are all receiving vaccinations this week through Children's Hospital. School staff have been trained on how to use the vaccination tool. We did that training on Monday, and they're actively making appointments, and staff are actively receiving the appointments for those vaccines as we saw Dr. Lewis at Children's Hospital earlier today. New Orleans East Hospital, the following schools will receive vaccinations through their mobile units. We've actually added two more, three, two more schools to this list for Friday. They're not on the slide as we're still making sure that all communications has happened with this, at the school, so we're not getting in front of any of our schools and their communications. But we will have two additional school sites get vaccinated through the New Orleans East LCMC mobile units this week. So earlier this week, I thought our vaccination output would be around 750 staff members, but it's actually going to be greater than 1,000. Given these additional partnerships, additional mobile unit access to two more of our school sites, and the Daughters of Charity vaccinations that are occurring this week, we will have over 1,000 school staff members vaccinated in our first week. For Week 2, we are identifying who the Week 2, next week's schools will be to receive vaccinations at Children's Hospital. They will receive notice by the end of this week and receive training on how to use that online scheduling tool. And we are currently, right before this meeting, working with LCMC and New Orleans East Hospital to start building the schedule for next week's mobile vaccination units, and we will be contacting schools very shortly who will be participating in that next week. And again, we are hopeful to hear about when our other partners receive their vaccine distribution numbers so we can begin to plan with those organizations as well.
Thank you, Tiffany. Before moving on to our next section, we can stop here, board members, and answer any questions you may have related to this material.
Yeah, Dina. John Brown. Let me just take this moment before we go on to another topic and, and just wanna thank you, thank Superintendent and all of the other staff members that beside you and Tiffany, you worked on this project. I'm so happy to hear that. Beside you and Tiffany, you worked on this project. I'm so happy to hear that this has come to fruition. The help to get the inoculation of, of our, our teachers and our support staff, a priority. I personally believe, and I have for some time, that they were similar to first responders. As it relates to their work and the possible exposures that they face. So. Thanks again, superintendent and for all the members of your staff for making this a priority. Thank you.
And Miss, Miss, if I can, I would like to actually piggyback a little bit off of what Mr. Brown just, just so eloquently stated. And just give another, I guess, great round of thanks to, to our representative Kira Orange Jones, who's on the Bessie Board. Her and I have been in close conversation about these efforts. She's done a lot of work to advocate on our behalf and to the governor. About trying to move us in a position where teachers can be, in fact, inoculated, receiving the vaccinations. And so I just want to thank her, thank the governor, and obviously thank Tiffany and team. And I, I know you guys are doing Herculean efforts and looking forward to staying updated as we are in the middle of this crisis and not done with it. And I'm very clear about that. Just very, very thankful for your leadership in the middle of it and your flexibility.
I will, I will join in the, the compliment circle here and just echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. This is really, not only is it really important work protecting our teachers, keeping them and, and school staff, keeping them safe. But I also, you know, like a lot of other board members, we've been receiving a lot of feedback on this. We've been doing a lot of reading on this. And this is really, you know, we're doing a lot of really cutting edge stuff in our district and that, that's not possible without your hard work. So thank you for keeping everybody safe and thank you for burning the midnight oil and for making sure that our teachers can get vaccinated.
Yeah, and, and you know, I, I was actually, this is Carlos Rovigón. I was actually at a virtual neighborhood meeting last night of all of the Carrollton area neighborhoods and that's a big group. And it was great to be able to deliver good news for once, to be able to tell them that the New Orleans East Hospital has now joined in. That we are rolling, that people are getting vaccinated and that we're, we're moving forward very, very quickly. And it's amazing the logistics you all have been able to put together. And yes, it was so great to be able to give concrete, good news during this extended crisis. So yeah, again, well done and it's very exciting.
Hi, this is Katie Bodwin. I want to, I just want to echo all of that, especially just finding out Thursday. That this, this eligibility was extended and to already have shots in arms on Monday is really incredible work. So thank you all very much and all of our partners to really step up and, and get this done is incredible. I have a question about, and maybe we, maybe we don't know, but about take-up rates and, and how are we, how are we doing with take-up rates? People signing up and being willing to take the vaccine. I know it's, it's hard to be among the first and it's really, I'm really proud of people who are making this right and safe choice. But I know people still have a lot of questions and so how can we help? Provide information, connect with resources, anything that might help increase the take-up rate if indeed that's something that needs to be done.
Yeah, so we asked all of our schools to complete a survey that we actually sent out to schools on January twentieth. So we've been preparing for this since, since mid-January. We've had over six thousand people respond to that survey. And we've had about seventy-eight percent of survey respondents say that yes, I want to receive the vaccine. And the remainder mostly just saying, not that I'm a no forever, but I'm a no right now. I think what we saw, we also asked for all those individuals who are hesitant to identify their main reasons for vaccine hesitancy. So we could, but to your point, Miss Bodwin, understand kind of where we needed to push on additional information and resources and connection. The main reason for hesitancy was around the speed of vaccine creation. And also just general trust with governmental processes. So very similar to what we're seeing across many of our other counterparts across the country. So we have about this percentage of people that are not going to want to get the vaccine at this first tranche. What we're hopeful for and what we've discussed with Children's Hospital and our medical advisors. Is that what seems to connect with those who are most hesitant is personal testimony and examples and connections. With seeing others that they care for or know of, who are receiving the vaccine and seeing their, their experience. And so we're planning for a round two of vaccinations to occur again late this spring. We're hoping that that will turn the tide for many folks who are feeling hesitant at this first pass. And that we'll be able to greatly increase our participation numbers in a second round later this spring.
Much, and then is this Pfizer or Moderna? Do we know what, what's the, what's the? What's mostly just because is that a three-week lag time between the first shot and the second one or the, or a four-week lag time?
It's dependent on the partner. At Children's Hospital and New Orleans East Hospital, they're providing Pfizer. So we're already planning for their dose two in twenty-one days, which is another part of this fun logistics puzzle.
Because they do leave with their appointment dates.
They do.
When they get their shots, so yes.
Yeah. I'd like, I'd like to jump in here and as a, for a daughter, that's a fourth grade teacher. I'd like to thank Dina and staff, those persons that actually worked this weekend to put all of this in place. I know Dr. Lewis, you've already stated that, but I'd like to restate those persons. Because everybody works very hard and has a lot of conversations about this, trying to move the needle in this direction. But those that actually do the work to organize and schedule all of these things, you, you may be blessed for it. The last thing I'd like to say is, is. We need something on our website. Where we can send people because I, I'm, I get a lot of calls. I'm having a Zoom meeting on Thursday and I've got to make a COVID presentation. Is there somewhere where I can direct? People to press a button and get all of this information. It should be prominent, soon as they open up our website, we should have a COVID nineteen button. That gives them all of this information. Even if it doesn't need, if it's not this presentation. It needs to be something very close to this that gives them the details of what we're doing. Okay, can we make that, can we make that happen?
So, yes, Mr. Marshall, what you're saying right now is what we recognized from the very beginning of the pandemic. And so we've had updates from, if you can remember last summer, even when we developed the roadmap. Where we are able to provide our updates around COVID. So, so we will continue to share and even update this information so people can see the great work that's happening in the school system. But I also want to go back to a comment that Board Member Bodwin said. Is that the fact that the governor made the announcement and we're able to inoculate individuals on Monday. I know we've been in this pandemic for quite some time and the governor closed schools on March thirteenth. But I also want to remind the board and the public that a lot of gratitude also goes to, you know, my, my team is actually. We're leading this effort, but we, we cannot do this work with our, our schools. Because they are the ones who are talking to their staff members and you see the response rate that we have on the survey. They are the ones who are on that frontline every single day encouraging their, their teachers as we had to pivot between in-person and virtual learning. But I also want to remind everyone today, on March thirteenth, which we want to be there really, really soon. NOLA Public School was also able to feed families on day one, on March sixteenth. So again. Because of how we work with our schools, we were able to, in the very beginning, start feeding our students. As soon as we closed the doors of the building to them. As soon as the governor was able to make this announcement, because of that cooperation, that work that we do. We were able to, again, as Board Member Bodwin said, inoculate individuals on yesterday. So again, it's a, it's a fight that we're in for our students, our families and our educators. And we're so proud at NOLA PS to be leading this work for our school community at this time. So I just want to share that even though we're in this moment here, let's not forget how we started and our, and because of the great work of our schools. We were able to do a lot of things ahead of many school districts because of that cooperation and collaboration.
Dr. Lewis, I, I appreciate that and that's exactly what I meant by my statement. That those persons are going above and beyond to call the duty to work evenings and weekends and things like that, that make all of this happen. Even from the very beginning, really, really deserve our thanks. But what I, what I'm asking for, okay, is would just tell me, can I take this presentation and put it on my website? So that when I meet with people, I can tell them, go to my website, punch a button. And you can see this presentation that gives them all the information about PPE, the vaccinations and everything else. We get an extensive update, can we make that update available to the public? And put it on our website so that it's in a prominent place, it's not hidden through a bunch of buttons. It's, we've got a COVID update button on our, on our main page. That's all I'm asking for. And if we can't do it, then give me the permission to go ahead and put this on my website.
Yeah, so, so a few things I'll say to you, Mr. Marshall. We will look at how we actually are providing information to see what enhancements we're able to provide. But also, as you say, can you put on your website, remember that these documents, we have also the board document, and board docs, they are public documents. And so you also can take them and certainly I would encourage you to share this information in your outlets as you're communicating with other members of our community.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis, and thank you, board members. If that's all for this, I'll move on to the next section.
I just have one more, one more comment that I think needs to be said. I've just been sitting here, you know, agreeing with everything that all my fellow board members have said. And it's easy to get, you know, it's easy to focus on what's immediately in front of us. And the vaccines need to get in people's arms immediately. And, you know, our own daily lives have been disrupted by this pandemic. But the work that y'all are doing is really historic, life-saving work. And I don't want that point to get lost. Like, it's quick and it's effective and it's great. And it's also like, it's something that is, you know, truly impressive and, and, and life-changing for people. So sincerely from all of us, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. And I know Dr. Lewis has said thanks. I will say thanks too on behalf of the whole team here at NOLA PS and all of our schools. Who really have worked our hardest to respond as quickly and as smartly as we could during this past year. So thank you. Okay, pivoting gears a little bit, I'll share a few key updates related to our school and student support efforts. First, Dr. Kelly Jordan, who leads our school support and improvement efforts. Will share a bit of some programming along with Dr. Perry around our office of student support and attendance. And I'll share a preview of some items coming up later in your action items. But, Dr. Jordan?
Thanks, Dina. Good afternoon, board members. Excited to share with you today updates on a handful of projects within the school support team. That address our district and department priorities of identifying and solving for some of the systemic barriers and challenges that our schools face. So specifically today, we're going to talk about the specialized programming for students with disabilities, as well as the citywide exceptional needs. So to give you a little bit of context, back in the spring of two thousand eighteen. We have a working group of specialization experts, parents, community organizations. That engaged and came to the consensus that our system really needed were high-quality structures for specialized programs, particularly for students with lower incidence disabilities. So over the course of the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year, the district engaged with school leaders and launched working groups. To discuss how we can leverage current funding sources to maximize impact and develop the different structures needed. In order to, in order to build program, specialized programming, the characteristics necessary for programs funding changes, as well as access. Last year, we started the multi-year rollout to reorient the citywide exceptional needs fund grants. In order to support the highly specialized programs. This is tied back to how we can leverage funding sources that were in place at the district. In order to make the shift to more highly, to more high-quality specialized programs. We recognize that the needs of students with disabilities varies and that some have significant individualized support needs. And others require more comprehensive programming in order to meet their needs. So the grant application portion is administered by the district and is designed to close the gap for students with the most significant needs. Who are not eligible or not fully funded through the state type cost services grant, which is a large amount of money from the state. That schools are eligible to apply for based on individual student costs. And last year, in the fall of two thousand nineteen, actually, that last school year, in the fall of two thousand nineteen. Through an application-based process, we selected two programs to pilot for upcoming school year. That focused on significant cognitive impairments, or students with significant cognitive impairments. And the programs that were chosen last year were the Discovery Plus Program, which is at first-line schools and housed at three of their campuses. Serving students in third through eighth grade. And then the Essential Skills Program, which is at Rosenwald. Last month, we also awarded, we, excuse me. We initiated an application-based process in the fall of two thousand twenty. Awarded a program last month, which focuses on students with significant behavioral needs. And that award is going to Crescent City Schools and there were a program which will be expanding to reach additional students across our schools. So one of the great things about the specialized programming work and how the district is able to support this work. We are advertising programs to families to ensure that they are clear on what's available across the city. Ensuring that the programs are high-quality. So through our engagement with the different organizations that are housing the programs and receiving this funding. And then we're also working with external partners to catalog all the programs, all the highly specialized programs throughout the city. Even the ones that are not necessarily funded through this specific initiative. So this is, the top of this slide shows how we oriented the money for CEENF. We are currently in the application process for the grant. And that closes this Friday. So schools are still able to apply for individual student-based needs. With the CEENF, through the CEENF grant this year. And we awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to each of the specialized programs that I talked about on the previous slide. For the continued implementation and expansion of those programs. We, last year, received over three hundred and eighty applications from schools and awarded close to a million dollars. Based on what was, based on the eligible applications. And we look forward to giving you an update at the end of the school year, once we see how many schools will apply. This year for CEENF and what we're able to award based on that number of applications.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan. Next, we're going to provide an update with Dr. Perry.
You know, before you go on, this is, just for Dr. Jordan, we talked about these programs, specialized programs. And first of all, how many of them, I see we had three hundred and eighty applications. How many programs have we been able to fund? And if you can describe maybe one or two of the programs that you, you really feel good and been, have been productive and positive. And, and, and seem to be having good results, if you can share with us.
Sure. So the three hundred and eighty applications, that is from the CEENF portions, so the traditional CEENF portion of the grant. So individualized student-based applications. So that's not the, the actual specialized program. So a school will essentially say, hey, I serve a student. This student costs me seventy-five thousand dollars because they have a one-on-one care. They require X number of related services. And so after the differentiated funding, after they've applied to the state high-cost services grant. They come to the CEENF grant if there's still a gap in funding. And that this grant source seeks to close that funding gap. Okay, so that's the three hundred and eighty applications. As of right now, we have three specialized programs. So we just recently awarded to Crescent City, the Aurora Program. But I'm happy to talk a little bit about the Discovery Plus Program. I have a couple notes on the one that's been at first-line schools. So the mission of the program is to provide students with skills that will help them lead big and purposeful lives. And they really focus in on, you know, meeting the students' needs in terms of academic skills, life skill. And whatever it is that they specifically need in order to be successful in the classroom. And as they matriculate through their K through eighth education and on to high school, where they will have access to additional programs. So we'll be happy to give additional updates at the end of the school year. As we continue to engage with schools on their different program quality and how students are doing in the programs. I know this has been such a unique year, but we have taught our schools that are still really, really trying to meet the needs of students with disabilities and their families despite the pandemic and the limitations that we've had as a result.
Thank you. And I do look forward to update on, on some of these programs. You know, as a former feature of students with special needs, of a special interest. Thank you.
No problem.
I have a question as well. And I'm glad to hear about all the, the programs that have already received funding. I'm most, excuse me, most familiar with the Aurora program, which I know is doing some wonderful work with Crescent City Schools. My question on this slide is, and sorry if I'm being a little dense here, but, so the, if I'm correct, the citywide exceptional needs funding fills a gap that isn't funded by high-cost services. Is that right? Okay, I see you nodding. So, so for 21 and 22, if CEENF is not around on the individual student basis, what, what happens then if there's a gap? Does the, does the school just have to eat the cost? Or will it somehow be serviced by these highly specialized programs?
Yeah, you hit the veil on the head there. The goal is to, you know, we're going to do our part to ensure that our schools and families and IP teams are aware of the different specialized programs that are available so that students can get their needs met through specialized programming. So, if we think about, you know, a school that has a classroom and let's say four out of five students in the classroom have a one-to-one para. But maybe it's best for those students' needs to be met through a specialized program that has maybe only one or two paras and two assistant teachers and is doing, you know, the work in a completely different and meaningful way. You know, then they can, they can go there and get that support there. So, yes, the, the CEENF portion will transition off, but we're going to be doing a lot of work to ensure that our schools know the options that are available in the city for students to access the different specialized programs that are available. And here, you know, we're talking about three, but we know there are a number of schools across our city that are doing specialized programming at their sites.
And if I could add, Mr. Parker, thank you, Dr. Jordan, that this work was really a part of a broad step back around how best to sort of create, actually sort of send better sort of resources for students with special needs versus having it so spread across schools and then in a decentralized way. So, through the work, starting with parents and advocates, as Kelly referenced, in engagement with our schools, the idea is that we want to sort of be seeding these programs that are accessible, high-quality, and where resources can be maximized to serve students with specific needs versus spread across and, in ways that have not always been as efficient or in delivering the best service to that student and family. So, there's lots to learn here. It is an innovation. Also, to note that this was a part of the differentiated funding formula transitions we made about a few years ago to help fund higher cost tiers at higher levels. So, there's multiple entities to try to think through where high-cost services has filled gaps in the past. What are those gaps? And what is the best way to actually serve those students in the future? So, there's multiple factors here that we can, we can share more details on at another date to think through how to best to serve these students.
Sure, that, that's great. Thank you. And my, my last question, which is, you know, a consistent question for me is, and it sounds like you started to answer it, it's just, when were schools brought into this decision-making process? And, and, you know, what has the response been from CMO leaders?
Schools were brought in in the 1819 school year, like nothing, everything we do, we bring to them first. As I said, this was a part of the broader discussion on thinking about the differentiated funding formula, which went, went through robust conversations. They were sort of two tracks of how do we solve multiple problems? And specifically, think of it in funding for our special education students, which is the bulk of the differentiated funding formula thinking. So, that started then. We had conversations, there was multiple resolutions that have come before this board that schools have supported. And we continue to sort of provide updates to them and also hear from them as we go through this process to determine how effective it is.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, this looks like a very important pilot program, first step into trying to figure out how to support our operators in handling special needs services, especially for some of the higher-needs students and that we can learn from. I know that when I've had conversations with school operators and school leaders, that support is very much desired in terms of how can we do a better job delivering services for the children, supporting the schools, and for the families. And, and so I, I would, as a differentiated funding forum, there's also a very important step forward. But I do look forward to continuing and building on this work and really thinking imaginatively about what we can do in our central position to support our schools for better delivery. Because I think that there's a, a great deal of recognition that we can do better and that, that there are possible ways forward, but it'll take a lot of imagining on our, and cooperation on our side with operators. And I look forward to continuing this work towards better solutions over the next couple of years. It's going to take a while to figure these things out. But I really like this, as a, as a first step.
Thank you.
Do we have, do we have an approximate number of dollars that it would take to fully meet the needs of all of our kids with exceptional needs? I know that the state provides a certain amount of money, and we have provided a certain amount of money. But do you know what, what is actually needed? Is there an approximate number out there that we, we are aware of, that we don't have, that we need to raise?
All of this work always centers upon individual student needs, Mr. Marshall. But I think in the aggregate, we have, there is not one magic number right now that we are aiming towards. We always know more resources are needed. But I also think in doing a lot of the reflection and planning that led to this work back in 1818, 19, and 1920, was thinking about how do we maximize the resources we do have? And, and then continue to think about how do we gather more? So, I think from a practitioner's point of view, more resources are always needed in terms of an exact number to serve our special education student population in terms of a gap between that and what we have in the funding formula. We do not have that exact number.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, we'll keep moving. Thank you, Dr. Jordan. Dr. Perry, and I am not sure if the board, all of you, you may have in different iterations have, have met with Dr. Perry, but Dr. Perry has joined NOLA PS, actually, when the pandemic began, and has been leading our Office of Student Support and Attendance. So, excited for her to share with you some of the work that team has been leading, knowing that attendance has been a priority for the district, for our schools since the pandemic began. And her team has been front and center in thinking through how best to serve a population of students that have been the hardest to engage on, on a recurring basis at school based upon our school, school leader's knowledge. Dr. Perry?
Good afternoon, board members. My pleasure to be here to meet many of you for the first time, some of you being reacquainted. As Deana said, our team prides itself on, on the ability to be able to engage with our behavioral health leads in the schools and to be able to provide direct services to young people and their families in their need. And our key priorities at this time have been around attendance and behavioral health, as you see in front of you. So, I'll start with attendance. And then as we get into behavioral health, after that, kind of let you, let you know what's elevated for us, what we are seeing as kind of key takeaways from the work that we've been doing primarily this school year. So, in its, in its general, general order, our attendance team, they receive referrals from the schools directly for young people who are, are disengaged and very chronically absent in terms of their regular attendance in school. As our response, we facilitate a variety of interventions to connect with families. We offer attendance conferences. And primarily what we've been doing now is truancy checks. And to date, we have received close to 850 truancy checks. So, you see there, over 730, that was about a week ago. We are at about 850 right now. And that generally entails an officer going to a home or social worker going to a home and literally knocking on the door, engaging with the family to find out what is keeping this young person disconnected and how can we get them back in school. As a last resort, we would make referrals to the court. This also comes from the school, and they're asking us to, you know, we've tried everything we can, it's not working, can you please connect us with the court? As you may be aware, young people are heard for truancy in municipal court, not in juvenile court here in Orleans Parish. And so, we would be the conduit to that process. On the behavioral health side of the house, we are offering case management services to families that are in need. We generally offer two types of case management. The first is what we call quick connect services, which is just as it sounds, very quickly, we engage with a family to see what their needs are, assess what their needs are, and see how we could support them to get them reconnected with school. And then we also typically offer intensive case management services, which is a longer course of, of counseling and support to a family and being able to help connect them, reconnect them with school. At present, we're serving 60 families through case management services. Next slide, please. And so, the key takeaways that we are observing and learning, challenging when we think about it, and making it even more difficult for families. But one thing that we've, we've noticed straight away is that many families are struggling with illiteracy, that parents themselves and guardians are struggling with illiteracy. And so, as you have an expectation of a young person to be able to navigate virtual learning, they themselves are struggling, but then their parents are likewise. We're noticing, as we relate and call it a trend, we're noticing that some of these families, we've seen them before. So, we may be engaged with a young person that's in 10th grade, but when they were in ninth grade, they were struggling with truancy as well. So, we're seeing that pop up. We're noticing, as you can imagine, that many families have financial concerns, basic needs. They're struggling in terms of just their basic needs. We also are seeing, as many other systems see, that pandemic, it's kind of putting a spotlight on systemic barriers that families were already experiencing. And we're just continuing to see that more and more. The most common reasons that young people are habitually absent surround the items that we've listed here. Low school engagement, all the way to academic deficiencies. I spoke of some of the others as it relates to parental support, lack of supervision, mental health challenges just in general. So, our team will continue to do this work to the best of our ability. We are, you know, working as diligently as we can to continue to support the schools and their needs to find out why young people are being disconnected. And we're also paying close attention to our data, and we want to get better at that as we move forward so that we can help schools on the front end in terms of not just responding to some of the challenges that are happening when we know a young person may be in trouble, but trying to help them identify some things on the front end so that they never get into trouble. Thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak with you. I hope this is helpful.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Any questions for Dr. Perry before I give you my last piece of the update?
Yeah, Dr. Perry, go ahead, Mr. Brown, please.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. President, if you want to go ahead, you, you can.
Oh, please, go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Okay, I'm intensely interested in, in, in this, in this topic. I believe many of these students who you are seeking to help or the numbers that we see when we see our graduation rate declines and the number of students who drop out. And I believe this pandemic will only magnify that, that, that effort. I think we have a low 80% graduation at this point. And that's been, I've been intensely interested in how we can improve on that. And I know that it's going to take exactly what you guys are doing. And that is reaching out to families, going out and finding these students and so on. I think we need to do it even earlier, when students may be in the seventh and eighth grades when they're excessively absent. And there's indication early on that they are giving up in schools. So, I believe that there's funding that's needed in order to increase the efforts, your efforts and efforts like you, of personnel like you and, and doing some things to really get in touch with these families and these students early on to try to encourage them to remain in school, let them see their options and that there are better options than just dropping out and giving up. So, I'm, I'm intensely interested in this. And I guess what my question here is, what are our numbers like right now as far as the numbers of students and families that you're serving or that you're able to serve, but there are probably many more that you're, you're not getting to? Is there, question one, is there a need for more people like yourself and members of your staff to try to engage these families and these students? And, and just to what degree are we, at this point, facing those challenges?
So, I would say to your question, I think there is a need for, for more capacity to our office. But I will compliment the district in the support that they have extended to us. You know, we are mindful of just the financial challenges for the district in and of its own right. And we recently had a few staff that stepped away. And from Dr. Lewis on, literally, Dr. Lewis and Deana have worked, and Gary and HR have worked with us to reassign some staff here within the district to be able to help us and support us on some level. We're very grateful for that. But I think as we come out of this, we would love to build our capacity here. And as I said, build it on a front end to be able to help schools as we look at data, help them look at data, to identify these young people early on to do this work. So, I do think there's a need for more capacity. And we would love to be a part of that if the district and the board feel that it's something that they want to invest in. I hope that answers your question, Board Member Brown.
To a degree, it does. But, but I'd like to do an informal way, not necessarily just as one board member working professionally with you. But I, you know, just have an interest in, in, in finding solutions and strategies that we can employ in this district, particularly finding additional funding. I think you mentioned funding, the funding is a challenge, and I know that to be a fact. So, finding outside, outside sources to provide us with, with the resources that we need to really get into it to, to hire additional staff. People, young people who will go out and don't mind going out and reaching out to families, knocking on doors and, and, and really finding out what is happening and reaching out to these families and these students and kids who have given up and trying to encourage them to stay involved. I think it's going to impact not only, you know, our graduation rate and success of, of our students and families, will reduce crime in our community, and so on and so forth. So, anyway, in, in a way, at some point in the near future, hopefully, you know, this pandemic is, is, is kind of reduced itself that we can come together and, and maybe look at ways that we can, we can help these. As critical, in my opinion, going forward in the school district, that we have so many families in need. Okay? Sorry to take up so much time, being a head president.
Important work, no, and we very much agree. Any other questions?
Sort of to add to that, what my colleague was talking about. It seems like if, if the number one barrier a lot of times is the, is adult literacy and the ability of, for the families to provide these supports to their students, is part of the work to connect those families with resources, programs, or others that, that might help them to eliminate that barrier to any extent and, and sort of build upon the work, not just for the student, but for the family as well.
We do try to do that to the degree that a family will allow us to do that, right? So, I'll give you an example. We have Officer Goat to a Home, and Officer Holmes is a part of our team. He can recognize that parent is struggling. He will speak to the possibility of, of them getting support as well. And we connect with social workers to try to do that. Some families want that support, some don't, right? And so, we run into that as well. Certainly, I can imagine that schools will run in that, run into that as well, too, in, in working with parents even more closely than we work with them to see that they're experiencing some challenges too. And I think it's going to take a community And I think it's going to take a community of wrapping their arms around parents to do that. But we certainly are prepared to do that and help if we can to make parents those recommendations and referrals to connect them for support, too.
And just to add, I think, you know, Dr. Perry, a lot of this work brings to bear all of the community services that are needed to serve our families beyond the school walls. And Dr. Perry sits on, and so does actually Dr. Jordan, many different committees, but Dr. Perry is our representative on the Children's Youth Planning Board Committee to think through all of the different resources available in the city, what coordination is needed. Her team is tuned into that. We also make sure our schools, who have a team of social workers beyond Dr. Perry, who do this work as well, to make sure that folks are aware of the resources in the community, but also are at the table actively thinking through, how do we make a stronger community within New Orleans for our students and families? So it is all a part of that puzzle.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Perry. Thank you. I think my colleagues have made a really good point, and I think as we figure out, you know, you know, how we're going to be able to get out of this COVID- nineteen experience in a new better, not really a new norm, right? Like, how do we make this better than what it is that we came from? You know, I think the question is, you know, is there efforts that we can do, whether it's finding funding? And I'm going to stand with my colleagues with you to be able to figure out if we can leverage some of the other funding strategies to figure out if we can get more money there, to be proactive with identifying some of these challenges early on as opposed to, you know, really having you all searching in the aftermath of schools contacting us, saying there's a challenge, right? And so, you know, trying to be proactive about how we can start to work together. That's not a you challenge today. That's really our systems challenge, and that's a systems thing that we need to think through and have better supports in this moment. And while, you know, I think in this moment, as we think about COVID- nineteen, it only exacerbates the things that we know that's true. And so in this moment, we got to figure out how we can think to plan to be better and not create a, you know, go back to things as normal. And I'm super proud of the work that you're doing to keep us in this home able to keep moving. And I know the team is thinking about that. And I know the superintendent has always been, I think, keeping our eyes on the prize there. But us figuring out as a district, a way to get more funding, support for you all, because this is very, very important. And Mr. Brown has always been, since the day, you know, I had the opportunity to start serving with him. He's always been on point about us making sure we graduate more students. And that is our, that's our charge. So I stand in solidarity with him, but very grateful. And this is to have you also, your first meeting, it's good to Dr. Perry, thank you so much.
Oh, well, I thank you, each of you, for your public service and for affording us the opportunity to do this work, because it is heavy lifting, as Dina said. But assure you that you have a team here. They're committed to it, and they want to continue to do it to the best of their ability. And you guys let us know, you know, when you want to talk to us, give us those orders, we're ready.
Thank you, Dr. Perry.
My pleasure.
Also, as President Ashley was mentioning about getting ahead, as Mr. Brown also mentioned that, I also want our board, our public, to know that we have not lost sight of that. We're still working on trying to be able to develop an early warning system. Of course, as you talk about funding, and so we am very thankful for the leadership of Thomas Lambert. Like, that's something that we haven't lost sight of. We're still working, but again, it comes down to funding. And so we're going to continue to update that, update you all along the way. But as we think of all the students and families that we're serving in school system, having the early learning system and having triggers that allow us to understand things that are early. In many cases, as we heard, Mr. Brown mentioned this, also for students at an early age, that's going to allow us eventually to be able to curb the dropout rate, because these students we're losing and many times we're finding out when it's, many times almost too late, it becomes a greater struggle versus being able to get that information early on. So I just wanted to share, as I turn it back over to Dina, that we haven't lost sight of an early warning system, and we're working through that. And hopefully, at the appropriate time, we'll be able to bring an update on that to you all as well.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Lastly, sorry, we're here for a long time this week. I apologize, but thank you all for the time and patience. As you can see, the school support work really does focus in our system around thinking about systemic gaps and ways that we can work together with our partners and our schools to address them. And my last piece is, as we've presented at the past two committee cycles around the Systemwide Needs Program, which was approved last January to address system-wide needs in our system. I just want, later today, on the board agenda, there is an item related to an RFP where we've identified two entities to receive the last element of sort of the planning process of the plan that was approved last January, specific to innovative programs to help support and diversify our talent pipelines. So as you all can recall, the Systemwide Needs Program identified two focus areas, teacher talent and also specialized programming, which we talked about earlier. Within teacher talent, there's multiple strategies that we're deploying within that plan over the next three years. The last remaining one that we will be seeking your approval for this afternoon is related to trying to identify innovative programming targeted specifically at diversifying who joins our teaching workforce and identifying ideally local New Orleanians and teachers of color to enter our school system. And so through that RFP process, an internal committee reviewed applications and identified two recipients, one being Brothers Empowered to Teach and the other being Fourth Sector, which, both of which are trying to think about unique ways to diversify and seed programming locally around Brothers Empowered to Teach focuses specifically on getting men of color in their sophomore year of university to think through and begin to gain access to our public schools and consider that as a career track. And Fourth Sector is actually doing a very unique partnership where they're the financial sort of entity over several partners here locally, including Warren Easton Charter School and KIP schools, where we're actually trying to do a grow your own from the high school level, which I know has been an interest of you, Mr. Brown. I see your thumbs up. And also, Mr. Marshall, in particular, around how do we start to seed and support grow your own programming in our city? So we are very excited to see that application. And while these programs are small and it's going to take time, we do believe that they're valuable and aligned with the Systemwide Needs proposal goals. And we hope that you will approve them later on today. And that concludes my report, Dr.
Thank you, Dina. Any additional questions for Dina?
Yeah, just, if I could, I am just so grateful and excited to see a new emphasis on getting educators from our community to commit to their local schools. And I came from a generation who graduated in the eighties, where a bunch of us from McDonough thirty-five, McMinn, Warren Easton, O'Perry Walker, you name it. A ton of us went into the teaching profession, and a bunch of us are still there. And it was really out of our commitment to the schools that made us and our desire to help them improve. And I think it's a recipe for a very important success, and the ones you've identified, we know and have a fantastic reputation. So I'm super excited to see this work, and I would love to see a giant wave of people coming after Mr. Brown, his generation, my generation, and those who come after us. I look forward to a new wave of local public school students especially coming and serving us as teachers. It's very exciting. I'm very glad to hear about this.
A big thumbs up to Brothers Empowered to Teach and the schools, looking to Washington and Douglas that are having programs that have our students in classrooms in our schools and learning the trade, learning that special trade of ours that's educating our young people. Big thumbs up, too.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Thank you again, Dina, Tiffany, Dr. Jordan, and Dr. Perry for your presentation today. I believe these were very informative. I know you say it was long, Dina, but it was well worth it because a lot of great information was shared this afternoon, and we will continue to move on at this time. So Kevin George will come forward with our accountability updates for the month of February. Kevin?
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent Lewis, President Ashley, lady and gentleman of the board. Here's our Accountability Committee meeting for the week. And so here are our notices of noncompliance. Here's our regular entry into our committee meeting. Here, we have no changes. And just to remind folks that these Level Two noncompliances that are opened up by the Southern Public Law Center, they are sent directly to us from the DOE. And the DOE works with each school and us to resolve these matters. And so they will remain here until we receive notification that they are resolved. We do have had two additional notices of noncompliance. One was with Rooted School, a notice of noncompliance dealing with the grading scale. And then also with Advocates for Academic Excellence in Education dealing with financial reporting. As you can see, that one was already closed because it was a matter of submitting some information to us, which they did, and we closed on February fifth. High school accountability, just want to talk about that a little bit as we get into the spring semester and we creep closer towards the end of the school year and towards graduation. We have Dr. Borgen, who has been working with schools, and her focus this spring has been to work with our seniors, work with our high schools to ensure that we have four major things, because seniors must have certain things in order to graduate. So she's been focused on those seniors, working with our schools to ensure that, you know, the high school transcripts correlate to the state transcript system, that all of our seniors have met their EOC slash LEAP twenty-two-five requirements, making sure that their FAFSA requirements are met and ensuring that there's alignment with their individual growth plans. So we hope to, in March, bring you an update, a report on those measures so that everyone is aware of where all of our high schools stand. Looking at our portfolio innovation, our charter RFA process. So right now, we've passed, we are at the milestone where all the letters of intent eligibility documentation was due on February twelfth. And so our next big step in this process is on April fifth, where schools and charter operators can submit their full applications. You can see here, I've outlined all the steps through the rest of the spring semester, in April and May and into June, that outlines all the different steps throughout this process. Each month, we will keep the board and the public updated on these different steps and the different parts that must be completed prior to the superintendent's recommendations to the full school board on June eleventh. You know, there are three different tracks that folks, CMOs, can apply for, or there's three different application tracks. There's new operators, experienced operators, and virtual school operators. And you will see the list here in a moment of all the different organizations who have applied. Any organization or individual may become eligible to submit an application by meeting certain specific eligibility requirements. All this stuff was shared with all of our potential operators. They had to submit that letter of intent, along with all the eligibility determination, by February twelfth. And so here are the folks who have met these requirements thus far. You could see, we have several organizations who have submitted a letter of intent. This does not mean that they will complete a full application, but although they did submit to us saying they do intend to apply. So you can see that most schools have indicated that they are looking for turnarounds. We do have some new starts there as well. So again, the full applications are due on April fifth. And once we receive those applications, we will follow all of the required processes and all the required steps that the law provides. Talking about our district innovation and school support network. Again, this is something that, you know, this is totally new, new for us in our network structure and how we support schools. And, you know, the purpose of it, again, is just to create more stability within our portfolio, reducing low performance, which, you know, generally leads to nonrenewals and revocations. We want to lower those to as few as possible. We want to balance support and intervention with our schools. And, you know, by doing this, if we do it well and we do it the right way, this should provide stability for families and students because we will have fewer nonrenewals and fewer revocations. So an overview of this process is that the schools and the network will partner with the district on additional supports. Schools will be provided supports and increased oversight to improve performance. And just a collaborative autonomy model for our charter schools that will increase the number of high-quality academic offerings for our students. So again, this is a process that we outlined way back last summer, and we've been talking about for the last couple of years here. And we're putting in that work, working with our working group in order to create a framework that we all agree upon, and that will make sense, and that will work for our schools and our families. So different pathways into the network, and again, we're working with a working group with this. You know, there are new schools, struggling schools, existing schools, you know, new schools. We're, as we're having these discussions with our working groups, we're saying that, hey, this would be a great idea, that new schools that are just getting started would have that support from the network. You know, we have struggling schools, you know, this is the one that most folks think about when we talk about the intervention network. You know, schools that are not meeting certain metrics, certain triggers, which, you know, we're working to define. They would receive those additional supports, those in academic, financial, and/or organizational areas. Existing schools, some schools may opt in just for additional support in different areas, whether it's academics or finance or organization. So as we work with our working group, here are some key takeaways that we've received thus far. And by the way, our next meeting will be tomorrow with our working group. You know, the work group is essentially agreed that each school, you know, should have an individualized improvement plan that addresses whatever specific issues, weaknesses, the areas of need that they have. Intervention should be tiered, should not treat everyone the same. It should be tiered by which areas the schools are having trouble with. And then also the severity in which they are having trouble. It should be tiered and not just a blanket approach. You know, how we can accomplish this? Again, this existing internal accountability and support capabilities, working within our team, within NOLA PS, to determine, you know, existing structures and existing support that we can assist and help our schools with. Also, we want to facilitate connections to additional resources. We do find that as we're working with the working group to identify just some high-quality providers that can assist all of our schools in different ways, depending on what their issues are. So again, working with the team, working with our working group, and eventually working with our school leaders to map this out. So how can we accomplish this? You know, in the world of in our team, you know, the portfolio innovation and accountability team, we always look at three things, academics, organization, and financial peace. So, you know, with this, we will, we would assess, gather, and form relationships with external academic improvement providers. You know, in terms of academics, we will review that. We will review also the organizational pieces as well, and also work with our external financial improvement providers as well, just to determine what pieces fit, what needs do our schools have, and then partner and grow those, create those partnerships with those organizations so that we can improve our schools through a collaborative approach. So some upcoming planning questions that we have, you know, and again, our next working group meeting is tomorrow. And some of the things that are going to lead our discussions are in what ways can a network align current policy and what ways might policy be amended? You know, how can we incentivize schools to participate with fidelity? You know, what criteria should be included in the triggers into the network? This is going to create some robust discussion, and we've had some of these discussions already, but we are continuing to map out our plan. And what level of intervention should the district focus on? And then how can additional funds be secured? So again, as we continue throughout this process, we want to look at or work with our schools and work with our working group to create a process that works for all. And Dr. Lewis, I will turn it over to you and ask if there are any questions.
Well, any question for Mr. George? To George, I have a quick question just about, I think you talked a little bit about where we're at with the the process for the new charter applications. Is that correct? I think you started the meeting with that. I sneezed and I had to blow, I apologize. I missed a little bit of it.
Yes, sir. Yes.
But my point here is, that I'm trying to get to is, you know, have we talked about internally the conversation or the ability to, you know, create a training opportunity for, you know, for locals who are interested in creating charters such that when it's time for them to apply, not, this is not a now question, this is really like in the future planning, all the stuff. Like, basically, is there a program that we have thought about creating to develop the capacity of local folks to really meet the chartering needs that we as a community have and are looking for? Especially as I think we, as a board, have articulated some of the things that we want to Especially as I think we as a board have articulated some of the things that we want to see in some of the charters to come and and so on and so forth. I just want to know, have we thought about that? Is that, is that a thing that's on you all's radar? And I know this, this may be a little outside of the thing that you offer today, but I know when we have people who are, you know, from community and, and maybe don't have the, the support or capacity from, from some of the national organizations or even local organizations who help to, you know, make sure people are able to, to apply. Just want to get your sense of, you know, is that even an issue? I don't, I'm just throwing it out there.
And, and let me just share one piece of information. As long as we're outside of an active charter cycle where Mr. George just mentioned, once we trigger that cycle, we cannot support anyone. However, what we have traditionally done for organizations that actually are seeking to write charters, like they can call, they can ask questions. They, many times in the past, they have met with members of our team just to try to understand the whole process before they even engage. Many times what has happened. We had organizations realize that, well, we're not prepared, so we're going to wait another year to apply. And then also we've had organizations who have during this process in the past have actually did a, a smaller process to help us understand like what they're building out over time. And so again, the, the key is that once we start an active application, the wall is up. Of course, for obvious reasons, but outside of that, we're here to support our community and answer any questions, support them to have a full understanding of what the application process is and the things that you would need to do, even if you're going to seek to apply to middle public school.
I, I think that's a great answer, Dr. Dr. Lewis Superintendent. I'm, I'm curious to know, do you, do you see the need to formalize that process in any form or fashion? Or do you think the, the way in which it's been going in terms of like the ad hoc, if people need help as opposed to?
I, I, I see the benefit and I think we can grow into that, but I was just sharing currently, that's the support that we're providing for individuals, but I do see the benefit in transitioning to some more formal at the appropriate time as well.
That's perfect. I, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't mistaken and.
Not left field.
Yeah, yeah. I'm like, sometimes I'm thinking and I don't actually have the, the data in front of me. You all are seeing it every day. And so I just want to make sure I'm not like, as Doc said, left field.
Yeah. And, and also I, I just want to share that even outside of NOLA P S, Caroline Roman, the Charter School Association have been offering this program actually for years, but individuals who are interested in doing what, just what you said. So again, also want to put that on the record that the Charter School Association, who you know, is a great partner, also has been doing that in the space. You know, they do a lot of work around, while I'm talking about them, helping to train board members as well. And so like, if you think about it, we do our trainings for new board members. We do our training with board chair. But because of partnerships, we able to actually do things in a more collective way. So I definitely want to share that the Charter School Association also provides that type of support to our community and has been doing it for years.
Thank you so much, Doc.
Hi, Mr. George. This is Katie. I was also have a question about the application process and curious at what point in the process, and maybe it's during the review and maybe it's, maybe it's after. Is a determination made about the need for new schools when we sort of think about our capacity? Whether we have excess capacity or if we're needing additional capacity in different parts of the city or in different parts of our portfolio. So at what point is that, that, when are we looking at the applications based on that decision making?
So, Mr. George, do you want to go?
No, sure. Go ahead. Take it. Look like you're jumping.
So that's always a question and it's very, we're very unique in the state of Louisiana because of our school system is a school system of charter. However, state law requires every school system in the state of Louisiana to actually open a charter application process, even if you're not seeking to actually start a school next year. So it's an excellent question because what we will do during the charter application process be very, very transparent that individuals, as Mr. George mentioned, that they intend to apply. They certainly can apply, but even up upon approval, it does not guarantee that your school is going to open the following year because it's going to go just based on exactly what you said. Is there a need? What's the demand? Looking at even COVID, for example, right now, we've been very fortunate that our school system, our enrollment has, you know, remained pretty much steady. But just say for instance, we would have a huge decline as we look at October 1 of 2021, then we're going to take those things into consideration before we even start the process of green light in school. So just because an applicant gets an approval, it doesn't necessitate that they are going to actually get a green light in our normal application process after you get approved. So great question. And right now I can tell you based on where we are, as schools get approved, there probably won't be actually, actually green light in schools in that normal fashion that we did in years past. But we're going to look at the data and our number and the need of the portfolio as we think about bringing on new schools in the future.
Thank you so much, Dr. Lewis. That was really helpful. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any other questions for Mr. George?
I have a question from the last meeting. Thank you so much for this presentation. Sorry, guys. I'm losing my voice. I've been under the weather. So at the last meeting, Mr. George, we talked about attendance and I'm really grateful that we were able to listen to a very, very thorough attendance update today. And as, as it relates to truancy, I wanted to follow up with you on something that came up. So I know that many of my fellow board members and I are doing school visits just to sort of get to know the programming that is offered at each of the schools in our districts as well as just to know the school leaders and, and you know, support them in whatever ways we can. One of the discussions that we had at the last board meeting was around the concern that I had about the data for attendance being accurate, given the system that we had been sort of using at that point, which was the Microsoft Word document that school leaders had to fill out every day and submit at the end of the week. And so I know that we talked a little bit about ways for, to streamline that. And so I'm curious as to what the process is now. And I'm only asking this question as a follow up because on one of the school visits, two of the school visits that I did, the school leaders shared that the process had actually become more complicated for gathering that data and that they were told that it was at the, at the direction of the Orleans Parish School Board that we had to, that they had to engage in this new process for collecting attendance data. And so I had to clarify to them that the Orleans Parish School Board members, we don't make operational decisions like this. So I think they probably just misunderstood what you guys were sharing with them. So I'm just curious as to what the process is now as, as a follow up to last month's meeting.
And also may I ask a clarifying question before Mr. George? Are we speaking to the principals of the school or the CEOs of those organizations? Just for a point of clarity?
Both.
Okay.
Okay. So yeah, no, great question. Thanks for asking that question. So one, we, there was at the beginning of the year, there was a, a Word document that was created to capture this data. Because as you know, we, we don't have access to everyone's student information system. So we have to ask for information like that. So that's what we use at the beginning of the year. But because we've listened to charter leaders say, hey, can we create a better process, a different process to collect this data? A lot of folks volunteered to assist with it and we did. So we created a, a new form, which was a Google document, which the schools began to submit that data in January. And so it's, and actually before we even, as we worked with a couple of different CMOs to create it, we actually sent it out to a couple of other CEOs, say, hey, look at this process. Give us some feedback on it. Let us know if it works better. If it's not, give us some feedback. And we received very good feedback on that form. So now it's, in the past, they would have had to go to a Word form, type it in. Now it's a Google form that's very simple. They don't have to calculate anything. And if, from all the, the cis people that I've spoken with about the form, a cis person, someone who collects attendance data can complete that form in five minutes. If it's anything more than that, then we're not understanding the form. So if someone is having trouble, I know we've sent emails out if like they should report to our team. Margaret Cage is usually the one directing that, or she is the one directing that information, directing that, that, that part of it. So if they'd have any questions, have concerns, need assistance, please tell them to reach out.
Yeah. And I would, and I would echo the same thing for those schools that may have mentioned that to please let us know. We'll double check and circle back with those schools. I will say that as we move forward with adding this attendance piece, unfortunately, and, and putting my, you know, teacher hat on, putting my principal hat on, it becomes one more thing to do. And I do know for some schools, it's actually just another thing that needs to be done. But the importance of providing this information, it helps us as a school system to understand where we stand when it comes down to attendance. Because as I sit and participate in other meetings with superintendents across this country, what they're missing, sometimes forty percent of their students, it's very important for myself and my administration to be able to gather that information so that we can keep you all as our school board members also informed to be clearly aware of where we stand when it comes down to attendance. We know the actual cleanest data for attendance is going to come way after when the school year is over, when the state reports to every school district to say, this was your attendance rate for the entire year. So again, we just thank our schools for their cooperation during this time. I know as a, maybe it's an antiquated way of doing it, but we're getting the information. And again, you heard from even Dr. Perry today, how important it is for us to have that pulse because we've been on the grounds with our school, making those home visits. Because at the end of the day, it's a partnership to make sure that we're able to get our young people connected back to the education so that that dropout rate that Mr. Brown talked about, that we can see that, that the graduation rate go on, continue to climb up. So again, please let us know those schools and we'll follow up to make sure if they're concerned, we can hear those concerns as well.
Yeah. So thank you for that. I think a few things. First, thanks, Mr. George. I do remember the process. Remember I was still working for schools a few months ago. So I'm happy you guys have streamlined that. And I absolutely agree, Dr. Lewis. I think, you know, as the, as the people representative, right? I want to make sure that I raise up the things that come up. And I think it's really important for you to reiterate the importance of why we're gathering this data. I think, you know, for a lot of leaders, it is one more thing to do when we could be doing X, Y, and Z. But I'm with you. I think getting that data regularly is going to help us, especially as we're we're, we have border transitioning into a strategic planning phase, right? And so it's going to help us really.
That's right.
How we frame our next steps, you know, as we, as we figure out how to ensure that kids have the remediation and interventions that they need, that teachers have the supports that they need. So thank you so much for, for following up.
If, if I may, at one point, I know that a board member, Marshall, had brought up the idea that perhaps in our unique school system, it would make sense if we were to come up with some way that we could easily unify data collection that as the schools are going through their regular process, it would be captured by the central office so that we would all have this data for, for our use, for the school's use. And that, that's a weakness of our system that maybe could be remedied in a way that doesn't impose upon our, our, our school sites, but gives us this data in, in, in an easy, real time, central collection way. When Mr. Marshall brought it up, I thought it was a, a great idea. I don't know how it would be done. I know very little about that kind of administration, but maybe it's something worth thinking about as we decide how we can improve our system.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. And those are some things that we are looking at, Mrs. Irving, on. Looking at some, some systems that can pull multiple systems together and provide us that information so that we don't have to request them to turn in information.
And, and again, as I mentioned in the previous, when we're closing the other presentation with Dr. Perry and, and the, and the rest of them, when I mentioned the early warning system. So that's, and again, at the appropriate time, because we're still trying to work through many things. So we're not be able to give a full update, but that's the things that we're trying to address in the early warning system. Because attendance is a trigger to say that a kid will potentially drop out of school. So as we move forward and able to actually have that early warning system, we'll be able to actually have data around attendance at our fingertips, have other indicators at our fingertip. But more importantly, being able to provide schools information about their students and making sure that they are doing the necessary interventions. Because this student may have five triggers that may say he or she is going to be a potential dropout. So those are the things that we're trying to create. So when we think of our early warning system, we want to be very, very inclusive. And we're working on that. And again, hopefully we'll be able to update the public and the board where we are as we try to work this. But it's a very complicated matter at this time, but we are working through that.
Thank you all so much. And again, I think it's important just for the public to know that there are a lot of moving puzzle pieces that you magic makers are, are, are playing with behind the scenes, right? And a lot of conversations that we're having to ensure that we are streamlining processes and procedures within the district to ensure that we, you know, are, are supporting a hundred percent of our kiddos. And so, you know, verbally to the public, just know that there are a lot of puzzle pieces moving and, and that for me and District Four, I'm really grateful for your, for your hard work as, as we navigate this. Thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. George? And if not, we'll welcome back Tiffany Delcor for her property update for the month of February.
I think we actually have the finance report next.
Thank you, Tiffany. I jumped ahead. So actually we'll have Mr. Stuart Gay for our finance update. I had to check by. Sorry about that, Stuart.
That's quite all right. Thank you, Superintendent Lewis. Good afternoon, board members. I'm hoping you're seeing my screen because I asked me if I wanted to share.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Good afternoon. We have the presentation of the December 2020 financial reports, along with our income statement, balance sheet and projection, along with some departmental updates regarding charter school funding and our treasury summary overall. Getting into the financial statements for December 2020, our budget, actual income statement showed that we had revenues of just over $2.6 million. Those were seven percent under our budgeted revenues for the month of December, which were $2,813,507. The expenditures for the month of 4.186 million were twenty-two percent over our budget expenditures of 3.435 million. Primarily with that, for the board's information, we pay a lot of bills in, in December, year end, sort of close out of a lot of items. And so our expenditures for the month were higher than, than normal, but overall for the year, they are trending below. The deficit for December of $1,582,651 was greater than the budgeted deficit by $960,000. And after transfers in, the net change in the fund balance was a deficit of $1.417 million. For the year to date, overall, our revenues are $335,000 over budget and expenses are $1,020,95 under budget. And the deficit for the year after transfers is $2.469 million, which is better than our year-to-date budgeted deficit of $3.9 million by $1.278 million. Overall, at the end of December, our cash totaled $101,486,127 and assets on the balance sheet totaled $110,167,426. Our liabilities for that period totaled $68,978,452. And as much as I wish this was true, there is a slight typo here. There's one too many fours. Our fund balance is $41,188,974, not 441. Some apologies for that. As we look at some department updates, first of all, our MFP distribution, this is through the first six months of the fiscal year. We see our December 20 distribution of just over $38 million to charters. This is through the DLFA across all level one through four state and local funds. And for the year, again, ending in December, just under $190 million has been passed through the district. We are continuing on with our differentiated funding formula, which is running about 1.19% below projection. And we are, again, doing lots of ongoing forecasting, given the impacts from. And we are, again, doing lots of ongoing forecasting, given the impacts from COVID nineteen and everything from last year. And we are still estimating our final deferred revenue for this year at fifty dollars per pupil, a negative fifty dollars per pupil. Uh, we have not received the finalized ten-one, October one student counts. And we have to, of course, merge that with the February one counts, uh, which will come out to do our final, uh, true-up for the end of the fiscal year. Uh, also overall, just a couple of other items, uh, with regards to S R funding, the additional stimulus that's come through. We have not received as a district, our allocation of those funds. The charters in the city have received information from the Department of Ed regarding their individual allocations. It's split into two buckets. So the entire amount, they're getting their first fifty percent tranche soon through the super app. And then they'll get another fifty percent next, uh, fiscal and calendar year. We're waiting. There's a, there's a, um, ongoing conversation with dealing with the non-public portion of the allocation. So that hasn't been determined. So we have not received those funds as of yet. When we do, we will certainly update, uh, the board. With regards to the budget, it's a, it's an ongoing process, uh, not only for this year, but certainly for next year. We're in the information gathering phase where we're looking at projecting revenues as much as possible. As well as starting to dive into the process of looking at our expenditures and matching that up, uh, with a sustainable, uh, budget based on recurring revenues. That we can, uh, project going forward and not only dealing with this year, but looking at multiple years as we hope to start coming out of this, uh, fiscal recession. But it will be over six to eighteen months is the period that we're looking at. And then also for next month, we will be bringing a larger, uh, D B E report to the board and talking about our participation levels. Uh, we are working, you know, one of the areas of focuses, uh, for us within the finance department is a lot of automation. They have a large system that we're trying to utilize to the best of our ability, which is Munis. It's our ERP. And so within that, we're trying to add in tracking systems and all of that to better track not only our vendors, but then, uh, be able to provide faster reporting. Not only for us internally, but to our external stakeholders. For a treasury update, um, overall, this is looking at all of the bank accounts that are, uh, under the purview of the Orleans Parish School Board. This is each, uh, this is each account that we have, uh, shows not only the description, but the bank, it ties to some tied to specific funds. Outside of the general fund, which is O one, and then you can see the bank balance. These are as of December, uh, thirty-first, twenty twenty reconciliation. So our overall treasury at the end of, uh, December twenty twenty was two hundred and six million, four hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and five cents. Uh, the big piece on that, uh, if you'll see is, is the Q sub sinking fund account. So we made our final payment. So all of our bonds at this point are paid off. We paid thirteen million dollars, uh, to seal that at the end of January. And so those are closed. And so that money will then sweep out and go to, uh, go to the bondholders. And, but we have retired that debt, which is an excellent thing for the organization. Uh, it's going to have a significant impact on our financial statements moving forward. Uh, should hopefully help us with some credit attainment and, and borrowing and those issues as we move to a different phase of what we look like fiscally going forward. So it's a positive, but, uh, on an ongoing basis in this, uh, quarterly treasury report, uh, it likely won't be there, uh, the next time you see this report. So, uh, that's where that sixty-seven million dollars will be going. Overall, our portfolio for investing, um, there is an investment policy that the board has adopted, which is policy D F E. It prescribes a lot of our, uh, or all of our treasury requirements. But overall, the portfolio has to have a high, uh, credit quality and it's invested in U.S. Treasury, Federal Agency, G S C. Corporate and mortgage back and municipal security. So that's all in the policy, uh, as well as several other restrictions, which I'll show you in just a moment. Uh, overall, for the quarter, our performance, uh, return was a point one one percent, which is very low. It was one of the lowest areas and we started to see the huge dip, uh, towards the end of the fiscal year and not only returns, but, uh, unemployment, jobless claims that really spiked, uh, overall. Uh, for the year, the portfolio returned three point two six percent, uh, and against our benchmark of three point one percent, which is good. Uh, in the fourth quarter, we did do some diversification away from U.S. Treasuries. Uh, but overall, the economic conditions impacting our portfolio, certainly the resurgence of coronavirus. And this is really looking at the fourth quarter, uh, calendar, second quarter fiscal. Uh, the initial vaccine rollout began. Uh, we had a presidential election, of course, in the federal stimulus package that was passed. Uh, the Federal Reserve is committed to still a near zero, uh, interest rate and monetary policy. And there was a bit of a deceleration, the, in the economic recovery, uh, with also a surging equity market. Uh, this slide here and the next slide, uh, have the similar, have similar information on it, but, but shown in a couple of different ways. So first off, looking at the top of this, the horizontal bar graphs, what you see in the yellow box ties down to what's permitted by policy in the chart below. So first off, for corporate notes, we can have per policy up to fifty percent of our cash in corporate notes. Um, so the next one is demand deposits. Of course, that's, those are just bank accounts. We can have a hundred percent of our cash in demand bank accounts. Uh, with the federal agency, uh, investments, we can have up to eighty percent and then so on down the line. So those yellow boxes are the total range of the percentage of the cash that we have that can be allocated to that level of investment. Uh, and so you'll see overall, we don't have anything in this, at this time with CDs or commercial paper, uh, but getting into corporate notes. Which is two point three percent of our, um, cash investments. Uh, again, permitted by policy is fifty percent and it's at two point three percent. So you can see the different areas. Obviously, we have a lot in demand deposits, roughly half of our portfolio. Part of that is the influx of cash that we utilize for the revenue anticipation notes. We do, we circulate a lot of money, uh, during the course of a month in our payments to charters as well as receipts back from grants. Uh, and so that's in, in constant flex. Uh, but then you can also see the other areas where we have investments. The next largest one is the intergovernmental pools. That's Lamp Louisiana Asset Management Pool. That's what that particular, uh, pile of money is. But in the other areas, they're, they're sprinkled around. And then we have a lot in, in U.S. Treasury Securities. Uh, for us, that would just be bills and notes. We can't do bonds because bonds would be a longer maturity. Uh, the maturity length on our investments is a max of five years, uh, per the policy. So that's why you see, um, everything in bills and notes. This is a little bit more detail, uh, in the same area where you see corporate notes and it's broken out by the actual individual issuer. Uh, again, you can see the, how much of the allocation is there as well as what's permitted by policy. So this is just a little bit more detail on whether it's in an N B S C M O, federal agency bonds, municipal bonds. Again, the demand, uh, bank deposit, see down there at the bottom of sixty-nine million, uh, which will go away in the intergovernmental pool. Lamp Louisiana Asset Management Pool is on there as well. As far as a credit quality rating, again, this is, this is directly from our investment advisors. But of course, we have, uh, for anything governmental back, there's no rating. But for the other areas, for munis and others, uh, we do have ratings. Everything has to be, uh, triple A plus, uh, for us. And then you see the sector allocation, again, half in U.S. Treasury and then the different areas of corporate federal agency C M Os. Uh, slight bit mortgage-backed securities, which was a lot different last year than has been in the past and then a lot in federal agencies. And again, uh, our, our policy dictates five years or less in maturity. What that does is it keeps you very liquid because most of the items that we can invest in are highly liquid. However, you tend to sacrifice on the, on the, um, interest rate side of the, of the game. So, uh, because we have to stay liquid, because we turn over a lot of cash, we borrow cash at the beginning of the year to go through the year. So, uh, our overall maturity distribution you can see is primarily within the one to two year, um, up to three-year, uh, range. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
So much, Stuart. This is Katie. Um, the policy around our portfolio distribution, is that based, was that developed based on national, like, norms or best practices? How, how was that developed?
Yes, very much.
Obviously, we're staying in compliance and looks like we're well diversified, but just curious how that was developed.
It is. There's a lot of, well, we're required, there's certain restrictions that we can do per, per state policy as well. And, um, there's just so, there's a, there's very little flexibility overall. But the policy was developed certainly within the state standards, but then also investment practices nationally for any municipalities, um, that are, that are doing investments. Per all the regulations provided by the state. It's a, it's a very well detailed and extensive policy, um, overall. But it lists out, it also lists out each one of those areas along with, uh, the level of tolerance for risk, whether it's, you know, again, triple A or above. As well as the maturity level, uh, within the policy.
Yeah, if I could build off of that a little bit, uh, former board member, board member Cleveland used to always talk about the need for us to stop, uh, you know, relying so much on, on the need to, to draw down cash from, uh, you know, from, from large banks. And then, you know, eat that interest, the interest rate that we eat, uh, every year. And so I'm just, I'm curious from your vantage point, is there, you know, do you think that we, uh, need to do something a little different there? And, and, you know, if we did, would that allow us to then take advantage of some of those longer investments? And, and then we, we have to then, uh, look at, you know, modifying our policies to allow us to be able to invest in bonds and so on and so forth.
Sure. The, the biggest piece for us currently is making sure we have every dollar in the market that we can get into the market. It's a fairly low performance environment, just given the restrictions. But overall, we want to have every dollar out there that we can. Uh, and so we've been, we sort of tinker with that during the year. There's certainly different periods where we have higher cash, uh, intake. Once we get the revenue anticipation note and start cycling that money at the beginning of the fiscal year. Uh, next year, as we move items, when we, you know, go to the full implementation of the school facilities preservation program. There's an initial fifty million dollars that's going to go into, um, go into that fund, which is not going to get tapped right away. So we need to determine sort of a floor and a ceiling on what we can invest in the market from that money. Again, trying to put everything out there based on current policy. Uh, there's, there's just been so many changes in the last twelve months with the areas that should or could be invested in as far as what we can do. That I think we have a good strategy. Again, it's just being able to put as much money in the market as possible so that it's not sitting. But you, you do some very low, when you had these short-term windows of investment period, you just see a much lower return. And in the, you know, with a near zero, um, interest rate policy overall, that's great for some investments. Um, you know, certainly people have seen it in different areas in their own personal investments. But for us, it just, it just shortens the, uh, amount of interest we can expect to earn. So we need to stick every dollar out there that we can.
Any additional question from Mrs. Stewart?
Uh, this is Alan. It, it's not so much a, a question, but thank you, Stuart, for your report. I'm very glad to see that, uh, see that good news about the bond debt that we have. And I'm excited to work with both, uh, district staff and fellow finance committee members as we think about, uh, creative ways to fund our schools in a post pandemic environment. Because I know that, you know, there are budget projections that need to be taken into account and learning loss that needs to be taken into account. And we'll need to get creative. And I'm just appreciative that we're in a strong financial position, uh, to be able to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'll try one more time and I'll call Ms. Tiffany Delkor up to do our property update.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Lewis. Good afternoon, board members. Happy to present our February capital and facility projects update to you. Today, our presentation will be similar. We'll talk about O P S B projects, R S D projects, and then an update about our property and real estate, um, next steps. For Rosenwald High School, the renovation, um, is moving forward after we've, uh, accepted the previous, the bid when identified a general contractor. Uh, the general contractor has mobilized and we've met with all major subs. We also had a community meeting last week about this program with the general contractor and community participants. For Douglas High School's auditorium renovation, um, work here for the design continues to proceed. Um, one of the important piece, was, pieces was evaluating the electrical capacity of the auditorium. And with all of the additional lights, speakers, lights, sound systems, would we need to increase the capacity for that, for the auditorium? Um, and that, that review has been completed and that we won't necessarily need to have a great addition to the electrical capacity, therefore keeping us on budget. And we're continuing to move forward with the remaining pieces of this design, um, and plan to go into procurement, um, in the next few months. Similar work happening at McMaine as well. However, one issue, we did have some, um, flooring and roofing issues that we needed to take care of at McMaine and the auditorium before we finalized the design, which also helped us finalize the design of some of the issues that we were able to see at that time. That work is completed, um, finishing up the punch list for that and also reviewing our final set of, um, design specs for the auditorium preservation. This is an overview of our D B E participation for NOLA Public Schools projects. Um, and do you want to note that this is the same data you reviewed in January as we provide updated data every other month? And we are currently at thirty-four percent for our total D B E participation so far in our construction programs. So no change from last month. So now moving into the projects being managed by the Recovery School District. First is New Hoan, New Cohen High School. Um, the demolition, the major demolition of the standing facility and standing existing structures has completed. And now is moving into finalized site work as part of that demolition. Um, and the notice to proceed for the general construct contractor to begin actual new construction is now March first, twenty twenty-one. So we've been on the schedule for the past few months, no changes there. But do you want to make sure everybody sees that we anticipate completion of this project and move in of the school is December twenty twenty-two? That's been the same for the past few months, but just want to call attention to that. Also for Martin Berman Elementary School's historic renovation, um, demolition has, has continued and we've moved into, we finished demolition of the gym. And now we've moved into forensic demolition of the actual school site. Um, this again helps us kind of review and reframe any additional design needs that we have as we're starting to take out, um, strategic sections of the floor and the walls and potential roof to make sure that we are identifying all unforeseen issues before we really begin the majority of the construction. It's a really important piece of historical renovations and that forensic, um, demolition is ongoing. We also are awaiting back some reports from some FEMA archaeological, um, reports that were done after the completion of the demolition of the gym. Um, these are just making sure that we're not disturbing any areas or protected areas or have identified anything of significance. So we're waiting back on those reports. Um, once we have the final, the final reports, we will know if there's any additional delays or additional, um, environmental phases or archaeological phases of reporting necessary to continue with, um, this project. But again, that is, um, of some of the areas that were already fully demolished as we began this project. The Career and Technical Education Center located at thirteen thirty-one Carlarack Street. Uh, we've made a lot of progress at, our R S D has made a lot of progress at this site over the past couple of months. Um, the contractor is mobilizing and beginning work. Uh, as you can imagine, with the age of the old McDonough thirty-five site, there is a, some environmental abatement that needs to occur before renovation can really take, go in full swing. And that is underway currently on the third floor. Um, we have asbestos tiles, different issues like that that have to be dealt with before we begin the full renovation. And so that abatement and demolition is underway to make sure we clear all environmental hazards before we do any construction and put back. And lastly, is an update on where we are with Lafayette Elementary School. So a lot of progress continues to be made at Lafayette Elementary. Um, I think significantly is the chiller has been set. Um, a lot of work is happening where, where the elevator will be. So you'll see on the sides of the building, the C M U block, um, where we're having this new elevator installed. So very physical, visible signs of progress at Lafayette. Also, as part of our action items that we'll review today is an amendment to our contract between Orleans Parish School Board and the Recovery School District for additional, um, costs related to change orders, um, that we'll be presenting to the board. As you can remember, Lafayette's pro renovation being managed by the R S D was halted after an asbestos issue. Um, and the building sent vacant for about a year, um, with limited access because of the environmental hazards at that time. Um, and so that led to some deterioration of the roof, um, and also exterior, um, some of the exterior waterproofing of the building. And so the change order that we'll be talking about as part of the action or the amendment to our contract will allow R S D to move. And so the change order that we'll be talking about at part of the action or the amendment to our contract will allow RSD to move forward with a change order is really related to several different things, but many of that being unforeseen issues as a result of water intrusion, poor drainage at the site, as well as some damage that occurred while the building was sitting in that vacant state that we want to make sure that we're addressing all of these issues before we bring students back. And the importance of approving that is it doesn't cost us any additional time if we're able to 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 approve those quickly. And so RSD can go ahead and move forward with those and we wouldn't have any delay with our school moving back into Lafayette this summer. And one thing I wanted to provide an update is we've done a lot of work around some of our property and real estate and some of our vacant buildings. And so I wanted to give you some insight into where we are with a few of these projects. The first is we're doing some upcoming, we're doing some new appraisals for two facilities as part of our ongoing process. One for McDonough fifteen's cottage on ten fourteen Bourbon Street. The last appraisal for this facility was done in twenty seventeen. A new appraisal will let us move forward with asking schools, giving them their first right of refusal of this already approved as surplus property and then moving forward with sale. And so that's the purpose of our new appraisal for this site. For Velina C. Jones, we haven't had an appraisal at this site since two thousand and sixteen. And so a new appraisal will also help us understand how we move forward with market rates, what are the current market rates for a long term lease of this facility, which we do have some interested parties, as well as just making sure that we have a good understanding of the value of this property. So those are two things we're moving forward on now. We're also, I'm giving you kind of a heads up notice that we plan to in March of this month, of next board meeting in March, is requesting the board to classify two additional properties as surplus. And surplus, when we ask you to identify a property as surplus, we need to give you a reason of why we're asking that. And that's going to be due to economic burden. We have two facilities within our control that are not school properties. One is a multi tenant rental property that we've been managing for several years and a vacant facility behind that multi tenant rental property. We want to make sure that we're in the business of schools and not in the business of rental real estate markets. And so we're kind of right sizing our role with this and hoping to move forward with a surplus of these two properties and then potentially moving forward to sale. Lastly, is we've made a lot of progress on our AP Turo Elementary School Facility and moving forward with our surplus process there. So this building is already designated as surplus. And on February fourth, we provided our notice to all schools that we intend to move forward with either selling or a long term lease for this facility at market value. We are required to provide schools first right of refusal for any school board property that is a school facility for charter schools or any schools right to purchase that before we move forward with a competitive bid process. We send that notice on February fourth, schools will have thirty days to notify the district of their interest in purchasing or long term leasing this facility at market value before we move forward with a competitive process for a long term lease for this building. And so that process will be complete by March fifth. And that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Ms. Delcor. I have sort of an ignorant question and I apologize ahead of time for my ignorance. Superintendent Lewis or Board Counsel, maybe you can help me with this. At what point do we, can you go back to the previous slide? At what point do we discuss in the properties committee, these things more in depth? So I don't know if if one of you can answer that for me, please. President Ashley.
So while while someone is coming, so first of all, certainly these things can be discussed today, but then also like, like when Tiffany talked about the General Meyer properties, like also the board will be looking at all of our properties in our portfolio at another time, but that's not, that's not today. But again, you you have this opportunity here today. And then Tiffany, if you want to talk about as we look at when you were doing more comprehensive, look at the properties, of course, with our property chair, but how that process will look when we do something like that in the future. But I think that's maybe what you're asking about when it comes down to properties, like when do you actually discuss and see how it ends up on the surplus list before an actual meeting like this today, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And I guess Tiffany, if you wanted to share a little about that and then also why these are here today? Because this is, this is kind of like out of our cycle and she can share just some more additional information of why you see these here today, but then our other process.
Yeah, yeah. One thing that that will be helpful and I'll make sure that I share, and I reviewed this with Ms. Bowden a few weeks, maybe a couple of months ago, is in twenty nineteen, the school district approved a facility plan which identified properties that we wanted to keep for the long term for either our own use for future construction based on their site size, their location, and their location in areas where we might not have enough seats for all the students that live in that area. Also through that process, we identified all properties that could be disposed of by the district through surplus. And so these properties, besides the General Meyer properties, were all part of that plan as identified as surplus. And the next steps for those properties were outlined in that twenty nineteen facility plan. And I'm happy to share that with all of the property committee as I've only really gone in full review with it with board member Bowden. So that might be a helpful thing, Dr. Juan Carlos, for you to see as it really does comprise some, provide some kind of vision and structure for how we're moving forward with our property and real estate projects.
Cool. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Ms. Delcor, really quickly, on these General Meyer properties, specifically the multi tenant rental property, I, you know, and I know I see Dr. Lewis smiling because I think he knows where I'm about to go with this. You know, I think I've been on the warpath and trying to figure out a way for us to, you know, create some form of affordable housing for teachers. And and I'm just curious to know, you know, is this the the type of property that would allow us to do that? Is there a reason why we're not looking at at being able to flip this and and offer that as an opportunity? Is there other surplus property that we can look at to figure out if there's a way to create, you know, affordable housing specifically for teachers as, as, you know, things continue to rise and we're trying to figure out ways to keep teachers in our school system and incentivize them, you know, is there, is there more to be said here? Dot, 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 all the questions and really excited about about this property.
Yeah. So what I would say is that this multi tenant property actually has tenants. And so when this property is sold, the tenants will be moving along with that next property owner as well. So it's actually a functional real estate rental property currently that is serving as an office building for a healthcare provider in the city.
And then also just adding to previous discussions that we had with other presentations. As we are looking at our resources and making sure that we're able to maximize our resource, we also recognize that actually moving this off of our portfolio actually overall helps us as a school system.
Let me just add Ethan. That's an excellent idea. I think there are other districts that have invested in and insert that that idea to provide housing and certainly with us losing the numbers and percentages of our teachers every year that we do, this certainly might have some impact in a positive, positive way. So I hope that you continue to pursue that idea, Ethan, and Superintendent, whoever else is interested in it. But thanks for that thought.
Definitely, we'll continue to pursue the idea. And then even as we talk about the General Meyer properties, that was part of what Joel and Smith before, these are surplus additional properties over there. These properties are definitely not that. And so it's our recommendation that the best thing, because as Tiffany mentioned, because of economic burden to move forward with actually taking these out of our portfolio.
Yeah. And just one note, just to make sure that we're all aware, because Velina C. Jones, like AP Turo is a school facility, the McDonough fifteen cottage is really just an ancillary space that was oddly connected to one of our schools and is is an independent structure. Velina C. Jones, just like any other district property, cannot be sold by the district without giving all schools first right of refusal to buy that property or long term lease that property at market value.
Any additional questions for Ms. Delcor? Okay, if not, we will, we have one additional presentation this afternoon. We're going to have Justin McCorkle, who was actually going to present to us the facility renaming initiative updates. And so, Justin, if you will come and provide our facility renaming updates for us this afternoon, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Superintendent Lewis, President Ashley, and attending board members. Is the screen clear? Everyone good on the screen? Did we share good today?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. That'll work. Well, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to come before you. I am here to present today the latest update on the NOLA Public Schools Facility Renaming Initiative. So as I know this kicked off well before some of you were in your current seats. So as a reminder that on last year, November seventeenth, the board passed policy in response to recent public requests, that policy stated that the Orleans Parish School Board believes that all schools should be welcoming, inclusive and inspiring places for all students and desires to ensure that the names of our school facilities and the people that we honor through the naming reflect the values of the school district. So that policy is what initiated and prompted the facilities renaming initiative. I would like to iterate that according to policy, the school board is fundamentally opposed to retaining names of school facilities named for persons who were slave owners, Confederate officials, and segregation supporters. Also listed in policy is that the school board shall have sole authority to name or rename any school facility, school campuses, individual buildings, athletic fields, stadiums, gymnasiums, et cetera, private drive or street that it owns. So what does this process look like? So upon the beginning of this process, our historian review team, as shared with you previously, will assess the names of all of the facilities within our current portfolio. From there, our renaming committee will be formed and public feedback will open. The committee will meet to research, review, and deliberate. That committee will then submit its renaming recommendation to the historian review team for clearance and validation. That historian review team will review those final recommendations. It will then undergo a final legal review, which will be then submitted to the superintendent as a final recommendation to be brought before the board for vote. So what's the timeline look like? Well, today I'm making a presentation to announce that public feedback will be opening on this Thursday, February twenty fifth. Following which, we will have another board update and presentation at our March sixteenth committee meeting, which will show the facilities, list of facilities to be renamed and the and the participants of the renaming committee will be announced. Our first public renaming committee meeting will be held Tuesday, March thirtieth. The historian teams will meet. Public feedback will close April nineteenth. And a public renaming committee meeting will happen again on Tuesday, April twenty seventh. Following which, the superintendent will receive the final recommendation no later than May thirty first to be brought before the board. So these components, the historian team, what will they be doing? The historian review team will act as a clearinghouse for this initiative. They will review the facility names to be considered for renaming. They will review recommendations of persons to be honored for historical and contextual accuracy. And they will review the committee's final facility renaming recommendations prior to submitting to the superintendent. As we've stated from the beginning, this will be a process that will be rooted in facts and not emotion. So we've assembled this team of local and national historians who are experts on New Orleans race and education history to ensure that we are doing as thorough as a job as possible to ensure that everything is historically and contextually accurate. The renaming committee. So according to the, to the school board's policy, our committee shall include representatives from the community in which the schools or street is located, employees, i.e. the administration members of the school system, and a member of the school board to be appointed by the school board president. This process by our policy is dictated to be, have public feedback that shall be open for a period not less than forty five days. The committee will hold no less than two public meetings to receive additional comment. And in the event that three or more names are submitted for one particular facility, the committee shall narrow this list of names for consideration to three and without assignment of priority, submit the three names to the superintendent. If the three names or less are submitted, the committee shall forward all of the names to the superintendent and that committee may assign priority to one if it chooses. The superintendent shall then recommend a name to the school board for approval. So what does public feedback actually look like? Public feedback will be looking for renaming submissions from the public for both buildings that should be considered as well as persons to be honored as a part of this renaming process. We'll be accepting submissions via email at community@nolapublicschools.com, mail at our twenty four oh one Westbin Parkway address and via public meetings. During these public meetings, all public comment will become a part of the public record for this process. So how is my public feedback handled? What happens to my submission? Well, if it's a recommendation of a facility to be considered for renaming, you must submit supporting documentation that will go with your recommendation to the historian review team. The historian review team will then validate that information for accuracy and then it will be sent back to the renaming committee for consideration. That renaming committee will then add that facility to the list of facilities to be renamed. Now, if you're nominating an individual to be honored, similar, but you will still have to submit a biography that will be submitted with the name of the individual to be honored that will go to the historian team to be validated. Once that nomination is validated, it'll be sent over to the renaming committee. And the renaming committee will add that nomination to the list of considerations to be honored for renaming. What is the criteria? This is coming straight from our FDC policy. And the criteria for individuals that we choose to honor are the following. They shall have made substantial contributions to his or her field of endeavor or to society in general when possible, have had some significant connection to the school, either as a student, an alumnus, faculty member, an administrator, a donor, or supporter, or have made significant contributions to the development of the Orleans Parish School System or to the state of Louisiana in education, the arts, public life, or some other appropriate field of endeavor. In any event, the individual must have been of such outstanding character and distinction that naming a school facility, private drive, or street after him or her would honor the school district as well as the individual and would provide educational and motivational value to the students served at the school. I'd like to emphasize that last portion that would provide educational or motivational value to the students served at that school. And that is the process that will be beginning on the twenty fifth. That is the completion of it. I have now stepped into it and am open to any questions that your board members may have. Thank you for your time.
Well, I guess I could start us off before before my board members chime in. I'm sure there'll be a lot of comments, particularly on this issue because of how important it is. But I just want to talk, just basically first say thank you, Mr. McCorkle. The the presentation was excellent and, you know, I don't know if if, you know, you, this is, you need to go give this presentation style to everybody who was doing this work. You just was lighting it up. I appreciate that. That was really good. As I talked about this a little bit prior with Dr. Perry, moving us out of COVID nineteen from a new normal to a to a new better, this idea around our commitment to equity is is essential. And and what I just want to acknowledge that, you know, I think a lot of folks would say that this I think a lot of folks would say that this piece is a small piece, but what I would say in this moment is when we talk about how we're committed to figuring out and fighting against structural and systemic racism in our systems, you know, there is no big or small racial equity issue. And I think in this moment, you know, this 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 measure, I think speaks to our larger commitment to equity, to stand with those students who came and testified and said that they wanted to see some changes, to stand with those parents who said the exact same thing, teachers and and community members alike. And so I just want to acknowledge how proud I am in this moment and very appreciative of your of the work that you've been doing around this because I know there's a hundred and fifty million things going on in the district relative to the pandemic. But this is definitely one of the most important things that I think we need to deal with as we have made a very clear commitment to equity, and this continues to move us in the right path towards towards holding true to that to that sentiment. And so I just wanted to start there and say thank you and in looking forward to the work that's going to be done on this committee for for our community and schools and in schools in general.
Yeah, I I echo what President Ashley has said. This was an excellent presentation. I love the 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 graphs, the graphics. It definitely helps me, and I think that, you know, I think Ethan really, really hit the nail on the head in saying that this is a critical step in ensuring that we're continuing to cultivate the socially just system that we want to see in New Orleans. So I'm really excited about it. And, you know, I'm really excited about just the the I'm sure the creativity that's going to come out of of the engagement through this process. And I know that we're going through a lot with COVID. You know, there are a lot of priorities. We're all navigating different priorities, and I think that, you know, this is really important for us as a school system for the reasons that I just stated. So I'm excited that we're still prioritizing this while doing the one million five hundred and twenty-five thousand other other things that we are doing as a school system. The one question I have is how, and this is super personal for me, right? Because I think that as a brown LGBTQ man, I feel like those two things are often left behind in critical conversations when we talk about equity, brownness, and LGBTQ-ness. And so I'm really curious as to how you're going to reach out slash choose organizations to work with that are going to support the dialogue that you have so that we can ensure that we're getting the most diverse sort of pool of suggestions and feedback that we possibly can.
So much for that question, Dr. Juan Carlos. What we'll just to be quite frank with you, we have spent weeks upon end with our comms department in creating a strategy that really allows us to navigate this COVID situation the best we can and making sure that we are making a broad reach to the entire community, that it's not just only a press release, but also working through you all in your personal networks as well as the staff and administration here and using all of our networks to get this word out, to tap into people. Because I warned anyone on the historian committee that we are opening up the floodgates, right? That we are putting the word out and we are wanting the feedback. So when you make this commitment that you're going to work with us to validate this information, it will be some information. We're not talking about one, two, three, maybe four, five suggestions that we're going to need you to vet. So we will be using some creative methods along with our traditional methods to get the word out about it to make sure that it is a streamlined process, but also making sure that we're tapping as many of the aspects of this New Orleans gumbo pot that we can to continue to make sure that coming on the backside of this that our district continues to represent the values that are written within our policy.
Great, thank you. That's very helpful. And just, you know, as usual, lean in on us and however help. I know that my fellow colleagues will agree. We will be happy to report and reach out to people that we know and ensure that this is super successful for you all as well.
And absolutely. And what you'll find, Dr. Juan Carlos, is that, you know, even already I've heard from some of your colleagues and even taking some of that, taking some of that input and implementing it thus far. I am an open door. You can feel free to shoot me a text, shoot me an email. You know, if you're running across someone and crossing one of your constituents, reach out. Just let me know, man. And we are like literally just trying to tap as many folks as we can to make sure that as many voices are at table and as many ideas are considered at this time. We're literally trying to do what wasn't done during integration.
Right, right, absolutely. And I commend you all for that. Thank you so much for leading the way.
Dr. Wagner Romero, if I could speak to that, I I think, you know, your point is very well taken. And and I just want to commend Mr. McCorkle, you and your your team on your work on this and and having a lens towards inclusivity of, you know, of neighborhood groups, of advocacy groups to make sure that everybody is represented and everybody has a chance to take part in this initiative. I think I also just wanted to commend you for developing a process, which, you know, I've looked at very closely. I read the policy very closely. I think the process you have come up with is very clear. It's very thorough. It's well thought out, and it's community driven. And those are all, you know, wonderful boxes to check. I also want to thank Dr. Lewis for his op-ed in today's Advocate. I read it as soon as I saw that it was there, and and it was, it's a great piece. And I think your words were were could not have been more true. So thank you for publicizing this effort in that way. And I would just kind of, oh, I also, I also want to thank the students across New Orleans who have been such tremendous advocates for this thus far. They have really pushed the ball forward and deserve to be commended for their hard work. So thank you to all the students that have been involved as well. And then finally, I'll just say that, you know, this is a step towards equity and a step towards justice. It's not a thing that the district is doing in this area. It's not the only, like, we will not achieve the system that we want simply by renaming school system, school buildings. But any step towards equity and any step towards justice is is one worth taking. So thank you for your extensive work on this area already, and I look forward to see what becomes of this process moving forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if I may, you know, my my mother taught me when I was quite a young man to never say that something is merely symbolic, that these symbols carry a great deal of weight and just look at the ones that were established in the era of Jim Crow and what we have left here with us. And I have I have heard critics who say that we have so much important work to do. Why are we worrying about renaming? And I would answer them by saying symbols are extremely important as they represent our values, and I really appreciate the work that y'all have put into it. And that, sorry. I appreciate the work y'all put into it, the process you've outlined. And as you all point out, th- this is an opportunity to reflect our values, to honor people, and that to inspire our students in our community. I really look forward to seeing what y'all come up with in this good process, and it is important work, and and I I have confidence that y'all will get it right. We have to get it right, and I see that that the process where that can be done. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, I'll just echo and say I think it's really important that this district, and we've you've proven, I think, your your staff has Dr. Lewis, that we can walk and chew gum at the same time, and it's important to to do these long-term vision the work as we also ensure that our teachers are safe walking into the classroom every day and that our kids are learning. So we have lots of priorities, and it's important that we address them all at the same time. And it's a lot of work, and and y'all are, you know, you're doing a lot of work, and and it's good to hear about it. Just want to highlight that the, I think, the council, city council just wrapped up their street renaming project. And so just to, you know, I'm sure there are lessons learned there as far as process and to understand sort of what some of the feedback was received from the community and maybe how how it could have been done better or what 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 might be a good model for for this as far as getting to every every corner of our community. So you might look to to them, to council. I'm sure President Moreno's office or whoever else. I think actually maybe Councilmember Palmer was leading the effort just to see sort of how it went and see what we can learn as we move forward with this process.
Definitely, definitely. We, well, you you will be pleased to know that I have been, I have been following along that entire process as it's been going. And ironically, we actually do have two members of our historian review team who have been at the table and a part of the street renaming process. And we have, they've brought some valuable insight thus far, even up to the point where we are today in terms of how to make this that much better for the community. So, yeah, we're on the same page there.
I would like to just add this last comment, maybe. That piggybacking on with your your parents taught you, Carlos Zerbegon, that symbols are important. And I would like to ask this question. If symbols are not important, then why were they created to begin with? And who were they created for? And I'd like us to keep that in mind when we question these symbols.
Anyone else? Almost the drop the mic one right there. Anyone else? Well, I certainly want to thank Justin for his hard work as we're working on this project here. It's a very important one for all of us, as we have stated thus far. And to our board members, as we go through this process, looking forward to your commitment dedication that I know is already there. As we go through, once the list is actually provided, we look at these names and the highs and the lows that may come with this conversation, we have to go back to, I will say, the question that Mr. Marshall just asked. And we know if we can focus on that, it will take us through the other side of this. So again, thank you, Justin, for your presentation. We look forward to working with our board members on this endeavor here. And then also, Mr. Parker, it was an honor for me to actually put my thoughts on paper and be able to put it out there and very thankful that it was published for our community to hear by voice even prior to this conversation even happening today. So looking forward to this journey, and we all going to take it together for the betterment of our school system. And if there are no additional questions for Justin, I'll turn this portion of our agenda back over to our board president for action items.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Lewis. And for all the presentations that that we received, at this time, we're going to move over to action items, starting at four point one. And I'll yield to board council to actually take us through those action items.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. We had action item four point one, request for proposal number twenty-one dash zero zero one three. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approves the proposal meeting the specifications, terms, and conditions for professional development innovation program on the RFP number twenty-one dash zero zero one three from Brothers Empowered to Teach Initiative in the amount of one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars and Fourth Sector Solutions LLC TBD in the amount of forty thousand dollars for one year with the option to renew, subject to board approval, and authorizes general counsel to prepare a contract for signatures of the board president and the contractor. May I have a motion?
No move. I'd like to move for approval.
Was there a second?
Second.
The motion by Mr. Brown, a second by Mr. Parker. We don't have any public comments, any questions from the board? If not, we're at roll call. Mr. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Bowdoin?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Dr. Wagner Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Zerbegon?
Yes.
That item passes. We're now at item four point two, request for proposal number twenty-one dash zero zero one four. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approves the proposal meeting the specifications, terms, and conditions for strategic planning consultant services as stated on the RFP number twenty-one dash zero zero one four from the Caulfield Consulting Group LLC in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for four months and authorizes the general counsel to prepare a contract for signatures of the board president and the contractor. May I have a motion?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can, who who was the second? I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Mr. Romero.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Ashley and a second by Dr. Wagner Romero. We don't have public comments, any questions from the board?
I have a question. I'd like to know if all members of the board has had an opportunity to review the RFP.
I think Ms. Garten has is designated to respond to questions on this item.
So it's, I still have the same question.
I was muted. My, the the RFP was posted publicly on the website per the notice, but I I don't, we did not engage with board members particularly on it, specifically on this RFP.
There any other questions on the board? If not, we're at roll call.
Is that typical process that, I mean, is that the standard that you post the RFP and?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, we followed our standard process.
Any other questions? We're at a roll call, Mr. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
No.
Ms. Bowdoin?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Dr. Wagner Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Zerbegon?
Yes.
That item passes six one. We're now at action item four point three, amendment to number two to agreement with CBRE, H. Hery, Inc., and Vanner Construction Management, Inc. for Program Management Services. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approves amendment number two to the agreement with a joint venture of CBRE, Hery, Inc., and Vanner Construction Management, Inc. for the Program Management Services, current projects, reallocating and clarifying the funding sources for projects included in the scope of work. May I have a motion?
I'm so moved.
Is there a second?
The other second.
We have a motion by Ms. Bowdoin, a second by Mr. Brown. We don't have any public comments, any questions or comments from the board? If not, we're at roll call. Mr. Ashley?
Yes. Yes, sorry, yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Bowdoin?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Dr. Wagner Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Zerbegon?
Yes.
That item passes. We're now at item Louisiana State Contract Purchase for Furniture Fixtures and Equipment. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approves the purchase for furniture fixtures and for the new New Orleans Science Lab High School from Granger and a three D virtual dissection table from the Anatomage Company for a total cost of one hundred sixty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-three cents to be funded by the school's capital outlay grant from the state of Louisiana. May I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Was the second from? Oh, Zerbegon, okay. We have a motion by Mr. Ashley, second by Mr. Zerbegon. We don't have any public comments, any questions or comments from the board?
I have a question about the determination of the sole source. Is that a determination that the board, the school board makes? And is it, are we using similar process to the state determination of sole source or or other policy?
Um, Stuart, Mr. Gay, are you available to answer that question?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we fi- we follow the state's policy, so we adopt their sole source process. And then also with regards to this, part of it's a matter of time in the procurement of these items, and then the sole source item. And at Tumage, apparently, are the only people that make a three D virtual dissection table, which Sounds very interesting, but they, uh, anyway, they were, that's the reason why they were sole source.
Additional questions or comments from the board? We're at roll call. Mr. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Bowdoin?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Dr. Wagner Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Zerbegon?
Yes.
That item passes. We're now at item 4.5, amendment number one to CEA with Success Preparatory Academy. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approves amendment number one to the CEA between OPSB and Success Preparatory Academy. Increasing the amount to be paid by Success Preparatory Academy for erection of the fence. From $62,400 to $88,292.57. May I have a motion?
Don't move.
There's a. We have a motion by Mr. Ashley, a second by Dr. Wagner Romero. We don't have any public comments, any questions from the board? If not, we're at roll call. Mr. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Bowdoin?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Dr. Wagner Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Zerbegon?
Yes.
That item passes. We're now at items 4.6, second amendment to Cooperative Endeavor Agreement with Recovery School District. It is recommended that the Orleans Parish School Board approves an amendment to the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement. Between the Recovery School District and the Orleans Parish School Board. Increasing the amount by an additional $1,174,199.62. For the renovation of Lafayette Elementary School and authorizes the general counsel to prepare the amendment for signature. May I have a motion?
I'm moved.
With a motion by Mr. Brown, a second by Mr. Parker. We don't have any public comments, any questions from the board? If not, we're at roll call. Mr. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Bowdoin?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Dr. Wagner Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Zerbegon?
Yes.
That item passes. We're now at item five, Mr. Ashley.
Thank you so much. Uh, we're at 5.1, adjournment. Uh, there no being, there being no further items on our agenda. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Senator Ashley?
Yes, please.
Just have one additional question, uh, of you and, uh, Dr. Lewis. Um, and hopefully I didn't miss this, walk away and miss some, uh, uh, some discussion on it. But Dr. Romero and I were in a invited to participate in a Zoom conference on, uh, last evening, uh, with influencers alumni. And one of the questions that came up, uh, had to do with the question of standardized testing or or not. And so there were various, uh, uh, parties there that discussed that. Did we, did we talk about that at all and where? If not, where are we? And and you can give me just a a brief explanation of where are we as far as standardized testing, uh, going forward?
Yeah, so currently, if we just go back to last year, uh, when the governor closed school, um, March 13th. Uh, several weeks thereafter, uh, it was an announcement that, um, we would not have any standardized testing because, of course, you, school was out. But that announcement only was able to be made because the federal government. Uh, US Department of Education actually allows states to relax the requirement. Of the annual state testing process. So again, what we are in the state of Louisiana, uh, as a collective group of superintendents in districts. Of course, uh, we're looking at that accountability when it comes down to state testing, should not be anything that impacts students or educators. But again, this is going to, uh, rest in the new administration because now with a new president, you have a new Department of Education, a new leader there. And, uh, if a waiver is going to be granted, uh, for states this year, no such waivers have been granted. Uh, but we remain in constant conversation with our state superintendent. I actually will be in a meeting with him on next, uh, next, early next week. But again, uh, that's where we stand. Uh, and and it's and it's a burden for our educators because again, no one is trying to not have assessment. But we know that this is a far from usual year. And, you know, you have students, for example, you know, where we have 40% of our students on who selected virtual learning. They have done, if they're required to come to take a test, they haven't been in a school building all year. So it's a very complicated situation. But please know that our state superintendent, our best board, uh, understand the concerns. And they have been discussing, uh, this item as well. But that's what's going on right now, that there's no waiver that has been given. At the federal level as it was given last year. In other words, we'll keep you all updated on any additional updates we get from our state Department of Education.
So it's still pending. In other words, um, thank you, uh, uh, Dr. Lewis. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Here, having no other business, I I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
I have a motion by Mr. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Bowdoin. Uh, do we have any public comments? I don't think so. I'll yield to board, uh, council for a roll call vote at this time.
Mr. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Bowdoin?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Dr. Wagner Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Zerbegon?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Uh, thank you. The time now is 3:50 PM. The meeting is adjourned. Uh, and good luck, uh, Dr. Wagner Romero on your first, uh, board board meeting for North today.
Right on time, 10 minutes. Thank you.
All right, brother.